Please call the roll.
Here.
Commissioner Anstott.
Here.
Commissioner Duquesne.
Here.
Commissioner Westner.
Present.
And Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Now is the time for public comments. This is time to decide for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Before we get started on the next item, though, I just wanted to explain that this is my esteemed colleague's last day on the commission after 21,000 years. So that's why you see this celebration. Right now, I'll call Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, a report that was requested. Please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. I do actually have a PowerPoint presentation. My name is Tuldi Clifford. I'm with Ventura County Public Works Agency, and I'm the Director of the Watershed Protection District. We have numerous responsibilities, including flood control, stormwater, flood warning system, water quality, floodplain management, and much more, including groundwater management. I thought I'd give you a little bit of an overview of the county water resources. And looking at these charts, it may not be clear to see, but approximately 63% of the water used in the county is groundwater. That's unusual. When you look across the state, the average is about 20%. And so we're well above that and have a tremendous reliance on our groundwater. If we break that use out a little bit, looking at agricultural and municipal and industrial uses, you can see that from an agricultural perspective, and that's our biggest user, they use about 85% groundwater, so they're extremely dependent on it. And so we need a constant supply of high-quality water in order to meet their needs. So when we look at groundwater across the county, there's numerous basins. We have about 20 large groundwater basins in the county and 12 smaller ones, and probably some others that we don't even know about at this stage. Some of them are relatively simple, unconfined aquifers with fair water quality and quantity, and others are much more complex with confined aquifers, zones of poor-quality water, and water elevations, in some cases, below sea level. And just to complicate matters, we have a whole bunch of wells dipping into those various basins. This one shows approximately 9,000 wells. Only about 4,000 of them are active. Several of them are backup. And we have data going back from tracking the groundwater use for several years. Some go back to the 1970s, and some go way back to the early 1900s. And so we use that information of both the water levels as well as the water quality in managing the groundwater basins. However, the authority to manage the groundwater basins within the state of California changed considerably with the passage of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. It was actually the compilation of three different bills back in September of 2014, when the legislators recognized the need to begin to manage groundwater so that we would have water for future generations, and we would have better control of how it is I feel like I should be leaning to get the slide to move a little bit more to the right. But in any case, the legislation had several goals, and really, the bottom line of their goals was they wanted local control of the groundwater, but they wanted to make sure that the local agencies also controlled it with something of a consistent, with some consistencies. And so the act actually provides a toolbox and the tools necessary to manage the groundwater. There's a great deal, a great number of requirements under the act, but they're looking at improving the amount of groundwater storage, preventing the deterioration of the water quality, but at the same time preserving existing water rights. And so the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, which now, of course, gets referred to as SIGMA, requires local agencies then to prepare a plan that will bring the basins into sustainability within 20 years. And the act has a great deal of information and the guidelines to the act, a great deal of proscriptive and prescriptive requirements for fulfilling the requirements under the But just to make it a little bit simpler, the state had to figure out which groundwater basins had requirements under the act. And there's well over 500 groundwater basins across the state. As I mentioned previously, there's over 30 of them within Ventura County. So the Department of Water Resources put together a scheme to determine whether, how to prioritize the basins. And what they've subsequently said is the high- and medium-priority basins require groundwater sustainability plans. So out of the over 500, there's 127 high- and medium-priority basins. There's 12 of those, so almost 10% of them in Ventura County. And so we have quite a requirement that we need to fulfill. Right now, we have the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency. Four of those basins will be managed by Fox Canyon. There's also the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency. They will be looking after one of the basins. And then there is the Santa Paula Basin, which is an adjudicated basin, which leaves six other ones, including Quayama up in the north, and five others that we have responsibilities for, not just the county alone, but the local agencies who will have to get together to manage those. So it's quite an undertaking, and there's been a lot of discussion. Oops, and if I went the right way. So this slide here just shows some of the basins that are located in the more southerly portion of the county. And if you're really interested, you can look at Bulletin 118 from the Department of Water Resources. It talks about why these are classified as high- and medium-priority, which ones have critical overdraft. We have two of those, by the way, which are Pleasant Valley and the Oxnard Plain. And so the act then goes into a great deal of information and new concepts. What is sustainability, and what are the requirements to get there? And the requirements, of course, come under the preparation of a groundwater sustainability plan, which we now all call a GSP. And that actually specifies the measures that are required and what needs to be done, the management strategies in order to reach sustainability. It's something that has to be done by 2020 or 2022, and then be maintained for an additional 50 years, and I imagine from that point on as well. So it's a very long-term plan with very stringent requirements. The key term is sustainability, and at its most simple, it's the maximum amount of water that can be extracted without causing undesirable results, which then leads into the next question. What the heck are undesirable results? And that's everything from a chronic lowering of the groundwater, poor water quality, allowing that in, land subsidence, and much more. We used to just look at safe yield, you know, that's sort of the definition of how much we can take out without anybody catching us. Okay, not really, but it's a substantially different way of looking at things. And so the bottom line is the act is now really making us take a look at in all of the basins, how much groundwater is available, how do we allocate that water supply, and then how do we supplement and manage the supply if the groundwater is insufficient? So where do we, how can we replenish the groundwater, or how do we bring in additional water? Or if people want to sell their water, can we put a water market in place? And several items such as that. This is what I mentioned previously, the undesirable results. You can see there's actually quite a few of them. And they can cause chronic problems. If we look up, for example, in Monterey, they've had subsidence in the neighborhood of 75 feet, and basically, that's where the land compacts. And therefore, new water cannot get into the ground, and so you've lost for all time the ability to hold additional water in the ground, and we certainly don't want that. And this shows one of the undesirable results that we're already experiencing, and that's seawater intrusion. This map shows the areas within the county where that's happening, and basically, that's within the Oxnard Plain and heading into the Pleasant Valley. So with the creation, or the ability to create these new groundwater sustainability agencies, they have quite a few new powers and authorities, which includes the management of groundwater extractions, well-management, and several others. It includes the ability to, or the requirement, to manage and monitor well-information. They can also impose fees so that they can take actions on this. It's going to be an extensive data collection, analysis, and management effort, and I imagine several agencies will need to work together to make this happen. This is also the agency that has to pull together the groundwater sustainability plan. And the plan becomes very important, and it's quite an extensive requirement under the plan, and includes looking back as well as looking forward. So you have to look at a substantial amount of historical information, including the groundwater levels, or the water quality, and any of the aspects related to the undesirable results. We also need to look at the interaction of groundwater with surface water, especially in some of our basins, such as the Upper Ventura River, where that's a critical component of the groundwater usage. We will also then, through this process, need to establish measurable objectives. So how do we get to sustainability? What actions do we need to take? And how do we do it? And basically, under this, under the act, we can do that in five-year increments. So we have four- or five-year increments in order to undertake that. And it will be difficult, and it will also require a substantial amount of outreach with the stakeholders. That's a key component here. It's not something that an agency will simply impose upon the stakeholders. There's a requirement under the act to develop the plan in concert with the stakeholders. Excuse me. So with all of the forming agencies and the existing groundwater management agencies at this time, there's just a ton of stakeholder outreach, a lot of stakeholder committees being formed. Many of the stakeholders are, in fact, undertaking several portions of the plans for these new groundwater sustainability agencies. From a land-use perspective, the plan, the act, also has tremendous requirements from a land-use perspective. They want to make sure that what we don't do is develop these groundwater sustainability plans in isolation of land use. They fortunately recognize that there's a real strong and necessary link between groundwater use and land use. And so within the act itself, and what I have on the next three slides are actually directly out of the act, these are the requirements that need to go into the groundwater sustainability plans and the actions moving forward, the management strategies. And so they really need to get into talking about what is the land use currently over the basins? Who's responsible for that land use? Because the different basins will have different land-use authorities, whether it's the county or the cities, which is why the counties and the cities are involved in the groundwater sustainability agencies. It also, there's a requirement within the planning to determine how will the land use change over the period of time that the plans are in effect? And are the plans robust, are the groundwater sustainability plans robust enough to adapt to that? And they also have to look at, will those land-use plans cause a risk to the groundwater? And so the land use that is in there needs to be identified and the impact on the groundwater, just not a matter of saying what the land use is. And on the flip side, the plan also has to say how it may impact the land use. And so is the water available? If the water's not available, when will it be available? How can it be served? What are all the other water sources that are available? And then they have to go a few steps further, and not just look at the boundaries of each individual basin. They have to look at, is there an impact beyond the borders of those particular basins? So if the groundwater is coming out, it may be used outside of that particular basin. And from a land use perspective, how does that work? What are the impacts both ways, once again? And then, of course, there has to be a tremendous analysis done on how the groundwater management will impact land use, how the land use may impact groundwater management, and how that will ultimately impact the sustainability of the groundwater basins. So that, there will be a lot of discussion, a lot of analysis there. And I imagine there will also be a lot of disagreement and a lot of very concentrated discussions about water rights when it comes down to it. The act spells out very clearly that this is not to impact water rights, but it's the first question that people ask us when we bring up the groundwater sustainability agencies. And as I mentioned before, it's very much a public process, and there's a great deal of cooperation and collaboration required in order to develop a successful groundwater sustainability plan. There'll be a great need for data management, data analysis, as I mentioned previously. And so I think the county's role ultimately will be to fulfill that role as one of the prime data managers. And then what we also need to do through that is we have to consider all the beneficial uses and users of groundwater and/or other water sources, and that includes agriculture, municipal, industrial, environmental, different water purveyors. And we have one or two water purveyors throughout the county, in excess of 170 different water purveyors. And so you have to balance out those various interests. It will not be easy. There's a, I think, there's a fine line to walk when developing the groundwater sustainability plans and these new agencies, because you're working with existing water purveyors who already have a lot of rights and authorities. And you want to make sure that what you're not doing is tromping over their rights and asserting rights that perhaps you, as a groundwater sustainability agency, may not have. So it'll take a great deal of coordination. And I think I've met with almost every single one of those, over 170 agencies, whether they're public agencies or mutual water companies. And then, of course, we have, like I mentioned before, we have to consider the environment, what's the impact on the environment, and what's the interaction between the groundwater and the surface water? And the last one, then, this list, which I keep throwing in there every time I speak about it, are the land use planning efforts. And quite frankly, this will be one of our most difficult ones to work through, because several of the agencies that we deal with have never had to worry about land use other than will-serv letters. You know, do we have enough water to enable that particular land use? They've never looked any further than that, and they've, I was going to say they never care. Of course, they care. And they've, but they've never had the regulatory requirement to take it any further than that, which they now have. So I think that will be a very, a very interesting process. And as we're forming these groundwater sustainability agencies, my role on behalf of the county is to continually remind them of the land use requirement. And I do that, and they're really getting tired of hearing it, but I think the message is getting through, and I think is very important. And so there's several, several key dates then associated with SIGMA. And of course, it came into effect on January 1, 2015. Everybody now is working through that process and starting to form these groundwater sustainability agencies. There was an initial rush of agencies wanting to declare that they were going to be the agencies for specific boundaries until they realized that all local agencies could declare. So fortunately, most agencies, all agencies within the county have taken a step back and are now working together and have created either joint powers, authorities, or other forms in order to create the groundwater sustainability agency. So they're taking a more thoughtful approach to how these agencies should be set up. In the Upper Ventura River, for example, there's five agencies that are involved within this joint powers authority. And when they're looking at the groundwater sustainability agency and the formation of the board, they're also looking at bringing in a couple of community directors onto the board, one which would represent agriculture, and one which would represent non-governmental organizations. And so they're broadening out how their board will actually be comprised, and I think that ultimately, this will lead to a more successful groundwater sustainability agency. And so they, all these various local agencies have until June of 2017 then to indicate their intent to form their agency. And then the high- and medium-priority basins with critical overdraft have to have their groundwater sustainability plan done by January 1, 2020. And our two basins with critical overdraft have to have their plans adopted by 2022. And then they have 20 years following that to implement their plan fully and reach sustainability. And so my next slide then is just a quote from Jeff Pratt, who's the Public Works Agency I may be misquoting, but it really, but it really, the quote highlights the difficulties that we're going to be achieving. And I think that over time, we will, we will reach sustainability in all of our basins. We will have a real collaborative approach happening, and land use hopefully will just become a natural consideration of the planning process and the implementation process moving forward. And with those brief thoughts, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions at this time?
Madam Chair, while the water rights guy ponders, I may. Thank you for that overview. It was, I know it's a lot of information to compile. So my understanding then is these agencies won't be defined by municipal, city boundaries or county boundaries. They can extend over to be an agency. So in other words, Park could be in Santa Barbara, Park could be in Ventura County?
Yes, and it's even more complicated. If we look at the Quayama Boundary, for example, Quayama includes four different counties: San Luis Obispo, Kern County, Santa Barbara, Ventura County, a community services district. And so there's a real weird mix in all of these, and so you have to determine how, in some cases, who's going to be the lead agency, because somebody's going to have to be responsible ultimately for implementation. And what we don't want to do is double all the administrative costs nor all the technical costs. And so we're really looking at, we're really looking at how best to participate in these. Upper Ventura River, as I mentioned, has five different agencies. Mound has three, which includes a city, a county, and a primary water district. So we have real odd combinations. And then when we start looking at how the plans work together, something like the Santa Paula Basin, for example, is connected to some of the other basins. So then there's the need to coordinate the plans between the basins. And so you're going to have all these different agencies, then you're going to have inter-groundwater sustainability agency agreements. So it gets really, really complicated, a little bit messy, but ultimately, hopefully effective.
Well, and I understand that, being from the Central Valley myself, between Hanford and Visalia, the big question is then, if there's a dispute, is there a mechanism going to be structured for mediation or resolution? And here's my concept, is we have cities here in the county, the county itself, but if we're part of agencies in other counties, and the example comes to my mind is the Newhall Project, which is upstream, for lack of a better term, are we going to get into who's on first? I don't know, third base. And so the paralysis begins, and who has enforcement? And these may be questions, answers, which nobody has yet, but I just wanted to put that out on the table.
Yeah, and those, we're already having those discussions, because in any one of the, I mean, pick a basin, any basin, we have issues just like that. And we have lots, in some cases, where people are pulling water out of the basin and serving only land outside of the basin. And so we're going to have those discussions, and so all of the agreements and the agencies will have to have dispute resolution written into how it will be managed. The inter-basin coordination agreements will have to have the same. And then you can also layer, add an extra layer on, how do you, how do you manage supply projects such as desalters? So desalters are using water that is really not usable at this, but it's still part of the basin. And so how do you give them an allocation without impacting the other users? So they're providing a benefit, and they're providing water, but they're also drawing out of the basin. So there's going to be a lot of balancing and juggling going on, and not necessarily full agreement on all issues.
I think I picked the right time to retire. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Anstott. Commissioner Anstott.
Is there any possibility that the legislature will enact water courts? Because when I think of everything involved, unless we develop a court system with expertise in this issue, that, I mean, every county in the state's going to be involved, we're going to get conflicting results, and they're not going to build any expertise. Is there any reason why that shouldn't happen?
Yeah, we don't see any reason why it shouldn't happen. What the state is looking at right now, their fallback position, not their words, those are my words, is expedited adjudication. And so they're looking at way at making adjudication easier. What we're finding through the formation, the GSA formation process, is that people are willing to bring their issues to the table right at the front. And so we've already had people say, if this happens, then I'm not worried about adjudication. But if this happens, I may call for adjudication, which then is a direct cost to the, to the users of the groundwater. So I think the state, by looking at the expedited adjudication and putting the process in there is, is almost feeding in some cases how the groundwater sustainability, how the groundwater sustainability plan should be developed. And so most of the agencies right now looking at, say, well, if we follow that same menu, we should be okay.
No. It's too complicated. It really is. You have to develop the expertise in whoever the jurors are, or however it's going to be handled. You know, I've been fortunate enough to go to a few seminars on this, and I think the average farmer rancher, that's the area I'm from, doesn't really understand that they don't own their water anymore, that they have the right to a reasonable use of it. And I think you're absolutely right, and this outreach is incredibly important, or you're going to be so mired in litigation and problems. And I would hope the county would take a leading role in like the Fillmore-Piru Basin. I think it's essential that they do that. I know there are other people vying for that, and it should be a broad cross-section of the users. But I would truly hope the county would take a lead and be the lead agency, quite frankly. Is there any mechanism for determining the lead agency?
No, there's not.
Oh, geez.
You do that through the collaboration and coordination. And so it becomes, it becomes quite intriguing, the discussions that we're having right now. I must say, though, that we are, the collaboration is tremendous, and I think that the education that people are receiving is really good. And I'm really surprised, no, not surprised, I'm really, I'm really happy with the level of sophistication that many of the water users have at this stage. When we look at, for example, the Oxnard Plain, Las Bocas Basin, and the users there, and Pleasant Valley, they have a really good understanding of what Sigma is. They have a really good understanding of their water rights. They also have a good understanding that through this process, that really in each basin, you have to determine how much water is available, who gets what. And then the third piece is, how do you supplement if you're short? They have a real good understanding, and they're, they're really wanting to participate in that who gets what portion, because of course, it really impacts their livelihood. And so they've looked at their water uses, and from an agricultural perspective, they're willing to take the steps to conserve, they're willing to change their methods of farming, quite frankly. The ones that we're experiencing the least sophistication or the most difficulty with are some of the smaller lease operators, so the, who may farm this piece this year and that piece of land next year, and then lease that one. So the ones who are smaller, because they're harder to get a hold of. But the big operations are already all over this, and they understand, they have a really good understanding of the water rights and the allocation systems and, and the difference between those two. So I think we'll get there, and, but we'll also be doing a lot of education. We'll be sitting in a lot of rooms, perhaps butting heads with people, but with any luck coming up with a common understanding at the end.
Boy, gone are the days. I remember following my grandfather around over in Port winey me, and he would kick the cap off, and it'd be artichoke.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions? I have one. Are there joint powers authorities being formed, or is that a possibility?
Yes, there is. That's, that tends to be the form of how these agencies are coming together.
So I've, I've taken a note of the number of wells and the number of basins and the agencies. How many joint powers authorities do we have so far?
So I'm adding up in my head. I think seven.
Okay, I like that number the best.
And surprisingly enough, some local agencies have decided not to become involved in the basins. So it really surprises me.
What agencies?
For example, this, the city of Ojai.
Doesn't choose to be involved.
As.
Thank you. Really informative presentation. Couple of questions. You talked about the issues of a couple of overdrafted aquifers. You're talking about Fox and, is it Calagus, you said?
No, the critically overdrafted basins are Oxnard Plain and Pleasant Valley.
Okay. What impact is saltwater having specifically on the Oxnard Plain and Aquifer? And how is that being impacted by what Oxnard's doing right now with their water reclamation program and input back into the system via agriculture use, I believe?
Right. What's happening now with the great program, they've just begun their deliveries to agricultural customers. So we haven't seen actually any impact at this stage. They've made a tremendous investment into the future, but not a real impact at that stage. And that will become, how they get more involved will happen through this planning process. But seawater intrusion makes a huge difference in the Oxnard Plain and Pleasant Valley. They have a lot of water there that they cannot use, and they also have the biggest demands for water within the county in those, in those two basins.
Will the, based on what I've read about Oxnard's anticipated recycling capacity and the impact on ag, is that going to have some rebound effect on the overall aquifer draft by ag?
It should have a big difference.
Some significant amount?
Yeah, the latest I heard from the city of Oxnard is they anticipate they could use as many as 18,000 acre feet of water from their system and deliver it out to agriculture. So that's a substantial volume of water, which should reduce the impact on the aquifer. But they're also looking at, if they deliver that water, can they actually pump from different parts of the aquifer and draw some water? So that's, we have to look at what is the net balance over time, and we're not, we haven't had that depth of discussion with them at this time.
Prior to the recent, that recent agreement, what was happening with that water that was being processed?
Oh, it wasn't being used. It was just heading out, heading out to the ocean.
So it's, it's a plus. The operation obviously is a plus to the aquifers and the county in general.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Next on the agenda is PL 12-0158.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jennifer Welch. I'm the case planner for the Local Coastal Program Phase II A update. Thank you, everybody, for coming to my hearing. I'm going to go a little off script before I jump into my PowerPoint presentation. I put together what I like to call the Local Coastal Program Virtual Tour. I think it's really important that we ground truth where these amendments are going to apply, and what better to do that than with a site visit? Our coastal zone is 43 miles long. So I think it's important that we see what our coastal zone consists of, and it includes all the land uses: industrial, commercial, open space, agricultural, and residential. Before we start the tour, I just want to show you where we're going to go. This is our coastal zone boundary map. All areas located, that are shaded in blue, are our coastal zone. The tour, let's see if I get this right, I'm not sure which is the, the laser top? Oh, there it is, okay. So we're going to start up here at the Santa Barbara County line, and we make our way all the way to the Los Angeles County line. Up in the North Coast subarea, right in here, oop, let me go back. Up in the North Coast subarea, we have a coastal zone boundary that extends about 3,000 feet inland. It parallels the 101. We're going to see the residential neighborhoods of Rincon Point, Sea Cliff, La Conchita, Mussel Shoals, Faria, Solamar. We'll also see some slides of Hobson County Park, Faria County Park, the RV recreational Parkway on Old Coast Highway. When we get to the city of Ventura, as well as the city of Oxnard and Port winey me, these cities have their own local coastal program that's certified by the Coastal Commission. So they have permit authority within their city limits. Then we hit the South Coast subarea, and we have Naval Base Ventura County, and they have what's called a federal consistency determination with the Coastal Commission. So we take a big leap over that area. We also take a leap over the Channel Islands Harbor, because they're governed by what's called a public works plan. It's similar to a local coastal program. It's certified by the Coastal Commission, and it governs the marine uses in the Channel Islands Harbor. So, sit back, enjoy the tour. I'll see you on the other side, and I'll have to give a cue to my board guy to go So that's my virtual tour. Hope you enjoyed it. Now we get into the meat of the matter. So, I'm going to start with my PowerPoint presentation, and just to kind of briefly go over that, whoops, very sensitive. I guess it got lost there. So the purpose of today's hearing is to bring forth seven amendments, or seven topics that are being amended in our local coastal program. These are archaeological and paleontological resources, film, parking and loading, public noticing, signs, tree protection, and water-efficient landscaping. Little bit of background. Again, here's our coastal zone map. These proposed amendments only apply to the blue shaded areas. And as you can see, right when you get down to the South Coast area, our coastal zone boundary actually extends five miles inland. So a lot of these amendments are really going to apply to that South Coast area. Little bit of background on the Coastal Act. In the early '70s, the coastal, the coastal areas were really getting developed, and people started taking notice and realizing that getting to the beach could be a lot more difficult. And so they, the grassroots, you know, organizations got a Proposition 20 on the ballot, and it passed, and it formed the Coastal Commission. And what that did is it said, okay, the Coastal Commission's going to have permit authority on the areas designated as our coastal zone. And they were given that permit authority for four years. In that four-year time period, the policies of the Coastal Act were developed and subsequently adopted. In 1976, Coastal Act is adopted, and it also gives the Coastal Commission permit authority indefinitely. But the Coastal Act also said, hey, we know that the Coastal Act policies are written broadly, that in the North Coast coastal areas, it's different than in the South Coast. And we know that policies should be tailored to each of those geographical areas. So they said, okay, to the 61 coastal cities and 15 coastal counties, if you come in with a local coastal program that is consistent, meets the requirements of, and is effective as the Coastal Act, we'll go ahead and certify that document, and we'll transfer the permit authority to that local government. So as you can imagine, a lot of those coastal cities and counties started preparing their local coastal programs and started lining up. The key goals of the Coastal Act are, first and foremost, protect coastal resources, not only protect them, preserve them, conserve them, enhance them, and if necessary, restore them. Coastal resources is broadly defined. It includes environmentally sensitive habitat, it includes recreational areas, it includes the beach, it includes parking for the beach. We also want to make sure that we maximize public access to the beach and maximize recreational areas in the coastal zone. We want to make sure that we have balanced utilization. And what that means is, an example would be coastal open space. The purpose of coastal open space is to protect natural resources, as well as allow minimal recreational activities. But we also know that residential But we also know that residential development occurs in the coastal open space. And so we have to make sure that there's this balanced utilization in that zone when we introduce a use that wasn't, you know, necessarily supposed to be in that zone, but is allowed in that zone. And then the last key goal of the Coastal Act is that we want to make sure that we prioritize coastal dependent development. As I mentioned before, we have all the land uses in the coastal zone. And so coastal industrial is just as important as coastal agricultural and just as important as residential. And so we want to make sure that these uses are prioritized in the land designations that they're allowed in. Our regulatory documents include three documents. We have a coastal area plan, which are the adopted policies by the board. They are guiding policies of our day-to-day land use. And then we have our coastal zoning ordinance, which is our implementation measures that carry out the policies of the coastal area plan. The third document that rounds up our local coastal program is the categorical exclusion order. This is an agreement specific between Ventura County and the Coastal Commission that identifies development that is considered to not have a significant effect on the environment and thus would not be required to go through a discretionary permit. The history of our LCP or our local coastal program? We were initially certified in 1982. Finally got to the front of the line, the top of the pile, got certified in 82 was our coastal area plan. Then our coastal zoning ordinance got certified a year later. Three years later, the categorical exclusion order gets certified. And then from 1986 to the present, we did have some minor amendments to our local coastal program. A lot of them were applicant initiated. We did have one state, and that was the one, excuse me, that had to deal with second dwelling units and making them ministerial permits. And then, excuse me, and then in 2011, we were selected as a grant recipient to really take a look at our local coastal program and see how we can improve on that. Excuse me. And so in 2011, we started working on this phased approach. And in 2013, you might recall, Phase One came before you, and it included some minor amendments. We reformatted the use matrix to make it more user friendly and we clarified some regulations. The amendments were solely associated with the coastal zoning ordinance. And now we're into Phase Two. We've further subdivided Phase Two because it's clearly a larger bundle of amendments and they're more substantive. Today I'm bringing forth seven of those topics. In the fall of this year, I'll be bringing Phase Two B, which is the balance of Phase Two. We are funded. We are funded by a coastal impact assistance program. This program generates its revenue from offshore oil leases and then it takes that money and distributes it to oil-producing states. And obviously California is one of those. And to qualify for this funding, you have to provide evidence that you're going to protect, enhance, conserve, preserve, restore coastal resources. And what better to do that than with our local coastal program? We do have a sunset date on this, and that's the end of this year, December 31, 2016, when our funding ends. So as I mentioned before, Phase One was certified in 2013. It was some minor amendments. We're coming back with Phase Two. Phase Two is the seven topics before you today. And Phase Two B will include environmentally sensitive habitat, coastal trail, and wireless communication facilities. I use acronyms all the time. I even started using them before my presentation. So I just wanted to go over some of the more frequently used acronyms that I'll be using throughout my presentation. Our local coastal program is referred to as the LCP. It's made of the coastal area plan, also referred to as the CAP, and the coastal zoning ordinance, which we refer to as the CZO. The categorical exclusion order is referred to as the CADX. Our discretionary coastal development permit is called a planned development permit, and we refer that as a PDP. And then a very common term, environmentally sensitive habitat areas is often referred to as ESHA. So the purpose, the proposed revisions of this LCP update is, number one, let's make sure we're consistent with state law. Let's make sure we're implementing industry standards. And then let's look at our unique coastal zone and see where we can improve on it. And so in some of these topics, like filming, we know that we want to encourage a film-friendly county, so we're opening up filming to all the residential zones. With regards to parking, water efficient landscaping, we're bringing those standards to current industry standards and state law. And then with signs, we have to correct an error in terms of the coastal zoning ordinance, sending the reader to the non-coastal zoning ordinance, which is not certified by the Coastal Commission, so they technically don't recognize it. So we are amending both the coastal area plan and the coastal zoning ordinance. Amendments to the coastal area plan are limited, as much as I'd like to go cover to cover, my funding and the scope of work that's in my grant agreement prevents me from doing that. But what we are doing is we're updating the preamble, which is really outdated. We're also reorganizing the format of the coastal area plan. It's currently organized by geographic sub-areas, north, central, and south. And what that does is it repeats the policies for each of those subject matters three times, adds redundancy to the plan. So our goal is to reformat it and make sure it's by coastal resource, because coastal resources are coastal wide. In doing that, we're adding a new chapter and it's titled Coastal Zone: Objectives, Policies, and Programs. And as we get more funding, we'll go ahead and build that chapter so it, again, is coastal resource dictated rather than geographically based. When Phase Two B comes in, environmental sensitive habitat will get consolidated and move up into that first chapter. With the amendments, again, we're trying to improve on the CZO. With archaeological and paleontology, this is where the problems were really inherent. The CAP and the CZO say the same thing. They don't distinguish between policy and regulation. And so we deconstructed that and put policy where it needs to go and where the implementation measures need to go. With filming, we're trying to open filming in the residential zone. We're also increasing the allowable days that you can film with a ministerial permit. With parking and loading, we have the benefit of current industry standards. In 2009, the board adopted the NCZO parking and loading regulations. Those regulations were formed through a huge effort on the planning division where they looked at ITE manuals, talked to a variety of traffic engineers, looked at over 40 ordinances to develop parking regulations that were consistent with industry standards. Signs, as I mentioned, that sends you to the NCZO, and that's not a certified document. So we have to bring sign regulations into our CZO so it can be formally certified and recognized. Tree protection is interesting. With tree protection, it's kind of a convoluted way as how they protect trees, and I'll get to that later in the presentation, but more importantly, it's really deficient on tree protection. It really talks about where trees need to be planted in a parking lot. It fails to mention nesting birds. It fails to mention what constitutes a protected tree, and it fails to mention what kind of mitigation you need to assign to a project when you remove a protected tree. Water efficient landscaping? Last July, the state, in direct order by the governor's executive order, had to update their state model water efficient landscape ordinance. And what the governor said is, you need to really ratchet down how much water we're applying to our landscapes out there. And so our water efficient landscape ordinance reflects the state's current regulations. And then public noticing, back in 2015, the board directed staff to amend the NCZO to ensure that in the rural areas, a minimum of 15 parcels are notified of projects. And so that was a pretty simple translation to bring to the coastal zoning ordinance, and that consistency is now county-wide.
Just a moment.
Jennifer, just back up a second because I know we've gone over this more than once in this room. The water efficient landscaping, the issue of setbacks and buffers and things like that, are you going to cover that later on? Or as far as being able to alter all that? It's just one of the things that will come before us, is requiring somebody the appropriate setback and know what to do in that. So are you going to cover that?
Yes. I'm just kind of giving you an overview right now. And then later in my presentation, I'm going to get more in-depth on what we're actually proposing.
Thank you very much.
And by all means, feel free to interrupt if I'm going too fast or if you have a question. So the proposed LC amendments by topic. So we're going to start with archaeology and paleontology. Now, the way I organize this in-depth discussion is, I identify the problem, I propose our solution in correcting that problem, but then I also mention the Coastal Commission's concerns. We have to remember that these proposed amendments will ultimately need to be certified by the Coastal Commission. So I have to be consistent with the Coastal Act in order to achieve that goal. And so I have to remember the key goals that I mentioned to you before and the concerns that they have. So with archaeology and paleontology, the problem is, as I mentioned, they both say the same thing. We're going to deconstruct it and put the policies in the appropriate area. With the CZO, we're really going to build in a detailed roadmap so that the applicants know what is going to be expected of them should their project encounter these resources. The Coastal Commission's concerns on this, there's one Coastal Act policy that addresses arche and paleo. And that Coastal Act policy says, site and design development to avoid these resources, and if you can't, mitigate and reduce those impacts. Our coastal area plan mimics that policy. Make sure you site and design development to avoid these resources, and if you can't, we're going to apply mitigation. The coastal zoning ordinance says, this is how you do it. And these, this roadmap is a step-by-step process where Phase One archaeological inventory will determine presence or absence. If the potential is there, it could elevate to an evaluation report to determine significance. And if there's a potential significant resource there, then it would be a full-blown mitigation plan. But this is really detailed now in our ordinance so that our readers, our customers, know exactly what is going to be expected of them. Same thing goes for paleontological resources. Same model. Policies are similar. Make sure that you site and decide to avoid that resource. And the same process of evaluating that resource is played out. In this case, the paleontological resource monitoring mitigation plan would be similar to the mitigation plan for archaeological resources. Filming. So with filming, the ordinance currently doesn't talk about how we are consistent with the Coastal Act. And there are no policies in the CAP to address filming. So we want to make sure that we address the Coastal Act, but we also tailor the film ordinance to our coastal areas. So what we're going to do is, we're going to highlight exactly when a discretionary permit is going to be required for filming and exactly what constitutes film activities under a ministerial permit. Coastal Commission's concerns when it comes to filming. Going back to their key goals, they want to make sure that film activities don't inhibit the public from getting to the beach and don't inhibit them from getting to recreational areas. They also want to make sure that activities don't impact ESHA. And so we have to keep that in the back of our minds as we start developing these ordinance amendments. Now, there are certain areas in this package of amendments where the Coastal Commission has concerns, you know? And I say that because, what I like to call is a little bit of pushback. Coastal Commission publishes guidance when the Coastal Act isn't really clear. And they have guidance on temporary events. And they use the example of volleyball tournaments or surf contests, where you're going to have a lot of spectators that are going to use a lot of the public parking, they're going to use a lot of the beach area, and potentially they could be charged an admission. And if it was the Coastal Commission's jurisdiction issuing the permit, they would immediately elevate temporary events during the peak summer months, Memorial Day to Labor Day, to a PD permit, a discretionary permit. Filming is a temporary event. And so if we were to align ourselves with the Coastal Commission's guidance, filming on the beach would never occur in the county because the film industry doesn't have the time or budget to do pre-production and wait for a discretionary permit for three to six months with no guarantee that that site is going to be there when they're ready to film. Now, there are instances where maybe it's a motion picture and they do have that time to do pre-production planning to get that PD permit. But more times than not, they're just not going to go there. And if we're going to promote ourselves as a film-friendly county, what we've done is we've developed policy and regulations to allow filming on the beach with a ministerial permit. Now, this is a departure from the guidance, but we also address public access and ESHA in hopes that that connection bridges that gap and eases the Commission's concerns. So the coastal area plan, the policies will follow the old format because we need to put them in recreation and access as well as the ESHA section, and they're not going to be consolidated in this phase. The coastal zoning ordinance reinforces the policies, maintain public access, make sure there's adequate coastal parking, and definitely avoid ESHA. This is our current matrix in our CZO. And as you can see, all but one residential district is allowed to film in the coastal zone. This is our updated use matrix. And here you can see it's crystal clear what is going to require a zoning clearance and what's going to require a planned development permit. The 14-day limit is actually from the Coastal Commission's definition of limited duration. So we're connecting those dots to the Coastal Act as best as we can. So we have to be crystal clear when you can get a ministerial permit for filming. You can get it up to 14 days. We know that there are ideal locations that are technically in ESHA, or they're surrounded by ESHA, but they're legally developed. And so we know Yerba Buena Road and Deer Creek Road are ideal locations. So we're going to allow ministerial film permits in those legally developed areas as well as private homes and, as I mentioned before, on the sandy beach. If you are going to get the PD permit, it's because you've exceeded that two-week timeframe. You potentially, your activities are going to potentially affect ESHA either indirectly or directly. A direct impact would be, I need to take out major vegetation for one of my sets. Or an indirect impact would be excessive noise where the critters out in the Santa Monica Mountains could be impacted by the activities that you're proposing. And say, for instance, you need to go on the sandy beach and you need to use that parking lot. That takes out the surplus of public parking and that would elevate it to a discretionary permit as well. So I want to go back to proposed filming on the beaches because this is where there's that concern from Coastal Commission. No matter what time of the year, you have to avoid ESHA. And ESHA on the beach would be tributaries to the ocean, sand dunes, rocky outcrops and the like. You have to maintain that public access to and from the beach and along the coast. And you've got to make sure that there's adequate coastal access parking. Now, in particular, in the peak summer months, what we've established is, you need to find an off-site base camp and shuttle your actors and your film equipment into the beach areas. That way, you're not impacting any parking and any coastal access. Additionally, you would not be allowed to film on the weekends or any holidays during the summer. Rounding up the film ordinance or the film amendments, I just wanted to mention neighborhood consent and the waiver. When we took this out to public outreach, the folks in the Silver Strand and Hollywood Beach areas had concerns that if it gets opened up in their residential districts, that it's going to be a popular film location. And if one house becomes a popular film location and two doors down another house becomes a film location and those permits are issued at the same time, they're going to be inundated with film crews and it's really going to degrade their quality of life. And so we've opened up the neighborhood consent in the densely populated residential neighborhoods zoned RB and RBH. Now, that's not just Hollywood and Silver Strand, it's also La Conchita and there's a, I believe there's one other one. We also have neighborhood consent if you're going to have road closures in excess of three minutes, if you're going to occur, if the filming's going to occur outside the designated hours that we've established for filming, if there's going to be loud noises like gunfire or huge amplified music, and then exterior night lighting that's going to bleed out from your permit area. So on to parking and loading. The problem here is just that we're out of date and there really isn't substantial policies in the CAP to address our parking. Clearly, the Coastal Commission wants to see us increase our surplus in parking, but they also want to make sure that that parking is spread out so certain areas aren't overused. And so our solution is, let's go back to the NCZO and use their current industry standards, which are still viable, and let's customize those to reflect the land uses in our coastal zone. California Coastal Commission's concerns are, hey, we know parking demand exceeds supply, but do your best to try to increase supply, but do your best to try to increase that surplus. There's way to use that. Let's not, you know, let's decrease the curb cuts because obviously you can't park in front of those. Let's make sure that we're, you know, mindful of illegally painted red curbs, and let's be mindful of cumulative temporary events that occur that can eat up on that parking surplus. So the coastal area plan, we're going to provide parking policies in recreation and access, and we also are incorporating an exception. And this is a second item that the Coastal Commission has some concerns on. Our coastal commercial zones are, except for two of them, are embedded in these densely populated residential communities, and they've been established as early as the 1920s. You might recall when Big Daddy O's came to you and asked for a variance because they just couldn't meet their onsite parking. And they got it, and we just don't want applicants to have to come in and circumvent the rules with variances. So we've built in this exception, and the coastal zoning ordinance implements how to request that, that reduction in required parking. It would only be limited to historic commercial properties because those are the land uses that are going to have the biggest challenge in trying to meet their parking. We also updated our parking ordinance by putting the narrative land use to parking ratios in table format. It makes it far easier to find what you're looking for and then know what you have to plan for. Going back to the parking reductions. So applicant comes in, he has an existing coastal commercial property, say it's a real estate enterprise and he wants to do a coffee house. Well, we know that we're probably going to generate a more intensified use, and we know he's not going to probably be able to get enough parking on there. The criteria says you can't expand the building because that's, in essence, you know, intensifying the use of that, that structure. You've got to look to see if there's any adequate space onsite that you can provide parking, even bicycle parking and other options. We want to make sure that you looked at all transportation management strategies, shared parking, off-site parking, shuttle service, anything you can do to alleviate that parking. The applicant's going to have to come in with a parking study, and they're going to have to look at all of this, but they're also going to have to look at, you know, what, when does that business operate? Maybe it operates at night when beachgoers aren't there, and so it may be not a conflict with having parking on-street. Maybe the primary customer base is the neighbors. Silver Strand and Hollywood Beach, where most of our coastal commercial property is, including Roosevelt Boulevard, is a distance away. And unless you really want to go there to, you know, have a cup of coffee, likely you're not. It's really serving the neighborhood, and it's serving beachgoers. And as I mentioned before, the Coastal Act holds up coastal commercial as a important use, and if we don't help these folks, we could lose these coastal commercial properties, and that's not a good thing. And so this exception alleviates and provides that flexibility in order to preserve these historic commercial properties. Onward to public noticing. This one will go real quick. As I mentioned before, the NCZO recently got amended. We're just, it was a seamless translation into the CZO. We just want to make sure we capture up to 15 parcels in the rural area. This is obviously going to apply to the Santa Monica Mountains. Onward to signs. So the problem here, as I mentioned, our CZO sends you to a document that's not certified. But with the cap, what's interesting is, our cap has no section that addresses visual resources. And we have visual resources, we have scenic resources, and we need to protect them. So we're introducing a new chapter to the cap that addresses visual resources, and sign policies are going under that heading. Sign policies are also going under the heading of public access because we want to make sure signs aren't placed that inhibit or discourage the public from getting to recreational areas and the beach, and in ESHA because we want to make sure only signs that are coastal dependent to ESHA, i.e. informational signs related to the resource, are located in Coastal Commission's concerns, obviously, over the past 20 years, they've come across illegal signs where property owners have put "private beach" or "no trespassing." They've even put "no parking" or "illegal red curbs" to prevent the public from using these official public areas. And so they want to make sure that our sign ordinance addresses that. We also want to make sure that signs aren't incompatible with the neighborhood and that they're not degrading our scenic resources. So the coastal area plan, again, we're going to introduce that visual resource chapter. We're going to ensure that access signage is located where it's supposed to be, and the coastal zoning ordinance is going to have a real detailed list of what constitutes prohibited signs, exempt signs, signs that require zoning clearance, and signs that require a PDP. This is our current use matrix. Right now, every sign is a discretionary permit, and that's not the way the Coastal Act looks at it, the California Code of Regulations looks at it, or our CATX. And so we're going to fix that. Rather than show you what the new existing sign metric is, I'm just going to go through some slides that show you examples of our signs and what we would allow. So for exempt signs, obviously, the house address signs, that's, that's a no-brainer. The natural gas pipeline location signs would be exempt, real estate signs, open house signs would be exempt, and obviously, political signs during an election year. Prohibited signs are the ones that are visual clutter. We don't want billboards, we don't want roof signs, and we don't want these illegal signs. Signs that require a zoning clearance are signs that don't have an impact on the environment. And so these signs are affixed to a building because it's the building that created the impact. The sign's only piggybacking on the building. Window signs. Now, we have this other sign that's affixed to the building, but it exceeds the area of an address sign on your house, and so that would require a zoning clearance. We also did temporary attraction signs. We understand that commercial businesses want to promote sales events and that they want to use, you know, floating guys and sandwich flags and the like to do that, but we don't want them up all the time. So we've actually built in a time limit of 30 days that they can go ahead and promote their business, but then the sign has to come down. And signs that require a planned development permit are typically the freestanding signs where you're going to have that base structure going into the ground and potentially conduit for, you know, illuminated signs. We have interpretive signs. These are all signs that require a base structure and development on the ground, and as well as murals, because we want to make sure the content of the mural is compatible with the neighborhood. Onward to tree protection. The problem here, I'm going to get a little in-depth here, is our CZO defines major vegetation as grassland, coastal sage, scrub, native and non-native trees. You need a PDP to take out major vegetation. What does that mean? You'll need a PDP to take out any native tree or any non-native tree regardless of size, regardless of species, and that's not what we want. So what we're doing is, we're establishing, yeah, it's major vegetation, but we're identifying what constitutes a protected tree. We also want to make sure that we build in policies to address tree protection. Currently, there's only one policy, and it's in the Santa Monica Mountains section, that says you shall preserve unique vegetation in ESHA. And trees can be ESHA, but it's under the Santa Monica's heading. And so the reader might say, oh, well, I'm over in the south, I'm over here in the north coast, that policy doesn't apply. So again, coastal tree protection policies are going to go up front in our new chapter and will be coastal-wide. California Coastal Commission's concerns are, we've lost a lot of great trees, and we want to make sure that we protect them. And so they're, you know, we have to site and design development to avoid protected trees, and if we can't avoid them, we have to mitigate for them. And to do that, it's really difficult because you still lose the value of a pristine oak tree, and you hope those 10 replacement trees come close to the value of the tree that was lost. We also want to address bird nesting season in trees, which is not even spoken of in our LCP, and we want to make sure that we increase the number of native trees because we've lost quite a few. So our coastal area plan introduces the coastal tree protection section that's coastal-wide, and our coastal zoning ordinance establishes protected trees in circumstances when you can alter those trees and remove them. So, types of protected trees. Trees designated ESHA are trees that are in riparian corridors. They have a function in that riparian corridor. They could be native, they could be non-native, but they have an ecological function in that riparian corridor. Any tree that's a raptor roosting nest breeding site, butterfly roosting site. Interestingly enough, butterflies like invasive eucalyptus trees, but if it's a bona fide roosting site that they're going to come back to every year, we're going to protect it. Native trees. Our LCP doesn't distinguish what constitutes a protected native tree. Here, we are consistent with the NCZO, and a native protected tree is three inches at breast height. Trees that are incorporated into a habitat restoration plan would also be protected. Historical trees. Currently, we don't have any historical trees, but that's not saying, that's not to say we couldn't have some in the future. Historical trees are trees that are historic because of a person, setting, a variety of reasons to call it out as historical, but we wanted to incorporate that just in case we come across that. Heritage trees are a little unique. We call out heritage trees as defined as a non-native tree, simply because the native trees are already protected. Heritage trees that are non-native, that just have a unique character about them, could elevate to a heritage tree if that tree qualifies and is, goes up the chain to be designated as a heritage tree. One of the ways that we try to simplify the understanding of our ordinance and the permit process is to prepare flow charts. And this is a real simple way of understanding how we dealt with the permit process for tree removal as well as tree alteration. We have two groups. We have protected trees and we have non-protected trees. All trees designated ESHA can only be removed under an emergency situation. There's no reason why you would need to remove a tree that is ESHA unless it's under an emergency scenario. And so the LCP currently has an emergency permit procedure already in place, so we follow that procedure, and a retroactive planned development permit is the last permit that they have to obtain. For heritage, historical, and native trees, you can take those out under an emergency situation, but you can also take them out to get reasonable economic use of your property. If you need to build a house and there's no place that you can build it but where that tree is, we'll let you take it out. Same thing for the access road to get to that development. However, you will mitigate for the loss of that tree. Fallen dead trees or trees that are standing up dead that could potentially fall, those would be exempt. But we also said, we encourage applicants or customers to come in and say, hey, this tree is dead, I'm removing it, here's substantive evidence that shows that it's dead. And that's because if down the road, they come in for a development proposal, or they sell the property to another guy who has a development proposal, and they go, I'm going to build right here, and we see on our aerials, well, there was a tree there, what happened to the tree? We would have on file that that tree was removed because it was dead. If we don't have that on file, it becomes a little bit more challenging to see where that tree went. Non-protected trees. Here, we're addressing the bird nesting season. We're going to allow you to take out non-native and invasive trees, but if there's a bird nesting in that tree, you're going to have to wait till after the bird nesting season to take it out. Now, if you have to take it out during the bird nesting season, you'll have to come in with a bird survey, and if the bird saver says no birds, then we'll allow you to proceed. And then trees that would be exempt from a permit would be obviously trees grown at a nursery or trees cultivated for agriculture. For tree alteration, same kind of premise. We have protected and non-protected trees. For ESHA, same model. You can only alter it if it's under an emergency situation. Heritage, historical, and native trees gets a little bit more detailed. And this is another area where the Coastal Commission may give us a little pushback. I crafted the tree protection ordinance modeling after the Los Angeles County Santa Monica Mountains ordinance that was recently adopted in 2014. And in their tree ordinance, they've actually referenced an outside source, which is a big no-no because the Coastal Commission doesn't have any power when that outside resource gets amended. But the resource that they cited was the ISA manual to appraise plants, which is a bona fide way to find the value of a lost tree. And so I referenced that resource as well. And then what I did is I said, okay, how did they deal with tree alteration? And they dealt with it by saying, if you alter a tree, you either mitigate for it or you can submit an in-lu fee. And the Coastal Commission came back and they said, okay, we see what you did, and obviously, our hands are tied, but we still don't feel that that ISA value that you calculate from that resource really provides the value of the lost tree. We think you need to build in some additional fees related to maintenance and monitoring. So we've added a surcharge, but we didn't call out what that surcharge is because we don't know when we're going to get back to this LCP, simply because if you throw in a monetary value, it can become dated within a month, a year. And so clearly, when we come across the in-lu fee, we're going to look at what would cost, what would the maintenance and monitoring costs be associated with that lost tree. Now, for native and heritage trees, if you're greater than 10% encroachment, or if you're going to prune more than 20% of your canopy or cut a branch greater than four inches, that tree has been compromised, and so you're going to have to mitigate for it, either by planting trees or providing that in-lu fee. Fortunately, we have an in-lu fee program for trees, and we've collected money and distributed that money to third parties who have planted trees. So the in-lu fee actually is going to a really good place to make sure we introduce trees. Any replacement trees and the money that we collect through the in-lu fees has to go back into the coastal zone. So these replacement trees would eventually be planted within the coastal zone. Now, for pruning, if you're less than 10%, then the tree hasn't been compromised, and we allow you to go ahead and alter the tree, but it'll be under a zoning clearance with inspection. We just want to make sure that when you showed us what you were going to do to alter that tree is what you actually did in the field, and so we do a follow-up inspection to make sure that you didn't go and exceed that threshold. For non-protected trees, again, we're just being mindful of the bird nesting season. And there are instances where you might have a development with a fuel mod, and in that fuel mod, you'll have an oak tree. And we're going to allow you to maintain that tree per fire department standards, which is typically limbing up the tree so it's not combustible, as an exemption, because we've already entitled you to that fuel mod zone, and you should be able to do that without any permits. The tree protection zone, there's a lot of literature on this, and, you know, everybody has a different opinion about how far the roots radiate. Trees can have a really narrow canopy and a really large girth trunk, or vice versa. And so what we did was, we said, okay, let's look at all these various ways of calculating the radius, and let's look at the one that gives us the most protection. So we're asking our applicants to say, what's the radius? 15 feet from the trunk, five feet from the drip line, and one and a half feet per inch in diameter of the tree. Whatever radius is the largest is the radius that we're going to hold you to as the protection zone. Water-efficient landscaping. The problem here is that our LCP references the landscape design guidelines from 1988. That has since been superseded by the landscape design criteria of 1992. Now, the landscape design criteria actually has state Welo water-efficient landscape regulations built into it. So it has the water budget, it has the hydro zones. However, last year, State Department of Water Resources updated their water-efficient landscape ordinance, and so we have to reflect those changes. And where those changes occurred was, they really put a reduction on how much turf you can plant, they put, they ratcheted down the factors within the water budget, and they, one of the other biggies was, required landscaping for residential, if you had 2,500 square feet of landscaping, you had to go in, submit a full-blown landscape documentation package. The state reduced that to 500 square feet. So our solution is to bring up those current standards. We're also providing policy that says, if you have a discretionary project that requires landscaping, it shall be water-efficient. California Coastal Commission concerns, the definition of development in the Coastal Act is, intensification of water use is considered development. And so they want to make sure that we are really mindful of how much water we're using, and if at all possible to reuse water, either collect it from your roof or connect to a graywater system. We want to make sure that landscaping protects habitat, and if you have buffer areas, that the transition landscaping is compatible with that ESHA. The coastal area plan, as I mentioned, is going to promote water-efficient landscape -- The Coastal Area Plan, as I mentioned, is going to promote water-efficient landscaping. To do that, we require landscape plans to build in drought-tolerant native plants, climate-adapted plants, and more efficient irrigation systems, gray water usage, stormwater capture, and the like. When would a landscape plan be required? Parking lots would require landscaping, development within 1,000 feet of a park, development on 20% slope, coastal commercial, coastal industrial land uses, and institutional land uses. Again, that residential development where you're going to have 500 square feet of landscaping. That's a state-dictated regulation. And then, of course, development that includes a required fuel mod. Now, we actually met with fire department. We don't want to see bear rings around houses in the fuel mod. We'd like to see a transition into that ESHA buffer. We recognize that fire department has concerns in terms of plant spacing and that limbing issue. And if they follow those standards, they can plant a transition zone without having this bare circle. And so, we've provided that communication with the fire department, where they're going to have to get the fire marshal to approve that plan, and then they're going to have to record that plan so the landscaping is done in perpetuity. They just don't neglect it. The landscape area development standards, we just want to see a variety of plants, textures. We're definitely minimizing the amount of turf. We want to screen, you know, utilities and other structures like trash enclosures that just aren't visually pleasing to see. We want to make sure that the plants that you pick are not going to intrude on any safety issues like block a parking light, or a tree that's planted under an overhead utility line. But we also want you to integrate, you know, public art, and benches, and paths, so it invites people to go into those newly landscaped areas. The state Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance requires that the landscape plan go under this intensive, like, water budget calculation. And so, the first thing that you have to do is you have to do this hydrozone plant, and you group your plants by water needs. And then, you assign the water factors for each of those plant groups. And then, you put in these factors. The evapotranspiration adjustment factor used to be .7 in 2009, and the state reduced that to .55 and .45, depending on if you're residential or commercial. What that does is it mandates that you use drought-tolerant plants. I did this exercise numerous times, and it took me so long to make the budget work. The estimated total water use has to be less than the maximum implied water use. And when I finally accomplished that, my plant palette was mostly drought tolerant. So the state really came down and said, we really need to ratchet how much water we use on our landscapes. So, that was my in-depth discussion of all the proposed amendments. I just want to briefly go over our recommended actions. Public outreach. I inherited this project three years ago, and March of 2014, I initiated my first public outreach. I nailed over 2,500 postcards to property owners throughout the coastal zone. I held two public outreach meetings. I held one up in the north coast, and I held one up in the south coast. And I did that because I didn't want someone from the south coast to head all the way up to the north to come to my public outreach. I wanted to make it as convenient as possible. I also prepared a website that's dedicated to our LCP, and that's updated regularly. I post when the public outreach meetings are on there. I've posted draft ordinance amendments as they were completed, and I've also updated it when we've had hearings scheduled. We also held meetings for professionals and consultants who had expertise in this subject matter, and we had separate meetings here at the county to discuss any concerns that they had with the proposed amendments. I also did some foot traffic and hit up the commercial with some flyers so that they could come to my public outreach. And the Ventura Star actually did an article for our March 2014 public outreach, soliciting people to come as well. So that was a freebie, that was a good one. For our public notice for the hearing today, I didn't do the postcard mailing. I can satisfy my notification through an eighth-of-a-page newspaper, because I have over 1,000 residents in the coastal zone. Now, I did that, but I don't have very much faith that people look at these public notices. So I went to this contact list that I've been developing over time. There's over 300 people, whether they're residents of the coastal zone, interested folks, or consultants. And I emailed them and said, here are my draft amendments, here's the website where you can find them. Have at it. And then, shortly thereafter, when I knew that my Planning Commission staff report was posted, I emailed them again, and I said, planning commission staff report is here, and it's available for your review. Coordination with coastal staff. For the past three years, we've met with coastal staff once a month, and if we didn't meet them on that month, we either talked to them, or we emailed with them. So our process has been completely transparent. The only issues that we see that pushback are that commercial parking, filming on the beach, and that in-lu fee for tree protection. So they know that, and we have not hidden anything. And we'll see how this flushes out when we get to the Coastal Commission hearing. Our SEQA compliance. The SEQA guidelines say, hey, the Coastal Act is already compliant with SEQA. And if our amendments are consistent with, meet the requirements of, and are effective as that Coastal Act, then we get a buy from SEQA, because we are simply inconsistent with the Coastal Act. But, we have to provide the Coastal Commission with evidence, and that is through a cumulative analysis and a policy consistency discussion with the Coastal Act. And that's in your packet as Exhibit 7 and Exhibit 8. And so, when we do get to the Coastal Commission, the Coastal Commission, in their staff report, will say, yes, they're consistent with the Coastal Act, and we approve the project. Or, they can say, we're denying the project, but if they modify it doing A, B, and C, then they'll be consistent with the Coastal Act, and therefore, we've complied with SEQA. The amendment findings, we had, it's funny, when we had to do the findings, we don't just do them once, we actually do them seven times, because we have seven amendments that we have to deal with. And so, with the amendment findings, with the cap, we pulled out all the general plan policies that were applicable, and provided a consistency discussion on those. And then, with the CZO amendment findings, we have four findings that we have to make. We have to make sure that the amendments are in the public health, safety, and general welfare, good zoning practice, is consistent with state law, and there's one more, and it's in Exhibit 9. We did have corrections, and this is a mammoth of a project. And I know that I oversaw some grammatical errors and some wordsmithing, and I spoke to Jeff Barnes about that. We can clean that up before we get to the board hearing. I also noticed that there was an error in the film ordinance, and I provided you an errata, I think a day after the staff report was published. And then, yesterday, I got an email from a resident in the Solomar Residential Community, and he highlighted another correction. This one isn't all that bad. The original CZO regulation for private streets acknowledges that a private street is not a part of the public right-of-way. But it also lists a whole bunch of design requirements that are road-based, but they also talk about lighting, and they also talk about parking. And so, in those aspects, I felt Public Works needed to step in and address certain issues related to that. However, I went back to the Public Works Transportation Site and pulled up their road standards, and for private roads, the Ventura County Fire Protection District dictates the design. So I'd like to call into the record and add this as a correction to our amendments. And finally, the Planning Division staff recommends that the Planning Commission take the following actions. Adopt a resolution recommending that the Board of Supervisors take the following actions. Find that the proposed amendments are exempt from SEQA. Adopt a resolution approving the proposed amendments to the cap. And then, adopt an ordinance approving the proposed amendments to the CZO. That ends my presentation. I'm sorry, it kind of ran a little long, but there's a lot to cover. I'm more than happy to answer questions when you feel that's the appropriate time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Are there questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Wesner?
I have a lot of questions. But first, I want to compliment you on the thoroughness of this report. It is a monumental task, it's going to continue to be a monumental task, and as I told the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, in 21 years, it has continually impressed me, the quality of the staff that comes before us. And I'm going to praise the director, because she knows who to hire. Okay. But no, excellent. So, what I would like to do is to move on, and then, it's going to come back to the tree ordinance, the sign ordinance, and...
I think water-efficient landscaping.
Right, correct. Thank you very much.
All right. So... Are there other questions? Commissioner Rodriguez?
I do have some questions and comments to make, but I think I'd prefer to wait and call staff back once we have our speakers.
Any this way? And I had extensive questions that we handled over email, but there's none that, there were no changes. It was just clarifications and focus.
I appreciate you giving me those questions upfront, so I was far more prepared. So thank you very much.
And thank you. This is a lot of reading.
Yeah.
Took me a week. And so, thank you for getting it ahead of time and allowing us to really go through it, because this is important and affects a lot of people.
Appreciate your review.
Thank you. Ordinary, okay. I'm going to call speaker cards in this order. Before I call speaker cards, though, I have a question about the exhibits that we have. We got an Exhibit B this morning that included letters from two different people, and then a revision to. So I've got an Exhibit B and a revised Exhibit B, but I think I want to make sure that everybody notes that there is a second letter on the first Exhibit B. So if we could, just housekeeping. The first speaker I will call are the people in favor, then the people who are neutral, then the people who are opposed. This is in keeping with our standards. So Bruce Stensley?
Good morning. And please, if you could, keep your comments to less than five minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair, members of the Commission staff. Thank you. My name is Bruce Stensley. I'm the President of the Economic Development Collaborative of Ventura County. We also serve, however, as the Ventura County Film Commission, as designated by the cities, the county, and recognized by the California Film Commission, which is a department within the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development. With that, of course, I'm addressing the issues relating to film. Our role is to promote a film-friendly environment in Ventura County, but very specifically, one that is around, that functions effectively, characterized by well-managed interactions between the film industry, and of course, the neighborhoods and the permitting agencies. So I have three general comments. First, parroting what some have already said, thanks so much to the staff for the detail, the thoughtfulness in working this out, and your attention to this detail. We recognize the coastal planet is very large, and that film is a small piece of it, so thank you for its attention, or your attention to that detail. Second point really has to do with some of, without getting into the real detail, but our appreciation for recognizing the unique nature of film as a temporary activity, and crafting specific new detail driven by that recognition, and driven by the specifics of the film industry. The more specific we get in these regulations, the better they are for assuring that we're managing conflict and get great positive outcomes in all of the activity that we're looking at in film. The third point is really around the notion of our appreciation for the complexity and the sensitivity for managing potential conflict between what is a very important industry activity in Ventura County that we're interested in promoting, but doing it in a way that is sensitive to neighborhood impacts. We think those are addressed, and of course, the environmental impacts, which is the fundamental reason people want to come to Ventura County and film in the first place, and managing all of that. Finally, just one comment. I understand this is all about policy today, but none of that makes any sense without expert execution in the field, and we want to extend our appreciation for the line and field staff at the Planning Department who manage this expertly and make sure that the film industry recognizes Ventura County as a place that they can manage those conflicts and do their business. We are in support of the recommendations as pertains to film. Thank you. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
No, Chair. Bruce, since we obviously have cities involved too along these, is there anything you've seen in these policies that create a potential conflict for the film commissions?
No. In fact, in our discussions and looking at this with the staff, we recognize a couple of things and appreciate a couple of things. The staff did look at what's called the Model Film Ordinance presented by the California Film Commission. We know that the staff have dealt with not only locally, but jurisdictions up and down the coast, so that we've got some continuity and consistency. We're not aware of any conflicts, and in fact, we think this takes a step in the right direction of assuring some consistency that the industry is looking for, so that they don't have confusion in moving from one jurisdiction to another.
My specific reason for asking that is because one of the requirements may be, you have to shuttle equipment and personnel, and that may be located within a city, and then you're caught between the two of us.
Right. And that's one of the issues that we deal with. I neglected to mention Bill Bartels is with us, I think he's familiar to you, he's our contract film liaison working in this, and he spends a lot of time, and we spend a lot of our time, in trying to navigate conversations between and among the jurisdictions and the industry. Almost no project that comes to Ventura County is in a single jurisdiction, they're kind of bouncing around. And I believe that is why we're getting a reputation as a film-friendly area, that those jurisdictions are communicating.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, sir. Bill, are you coming back? Next speaker, Charles Caspary, followed by Roger Myers.
Good morning, Commissioners. I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide comment and address you today. I'd like to begin by thanking Planning Director Prilhart and her entire staff for a monumental job. This is a revision that, it's a monumental job just to read it, much less produce it. Our Homeowners Association submitted comments, I submitted comments personally, and we're supportive of virtually all of this revision. However, there's, and we do appreciate the change in the parking, or the street requirements where there are private streets. However, there were three particular provisions in that comment, I'll address that in a moment. Solomar Beach Colony has recorded public access easements, starting in 1974, that were voluntary. And we provided, I provided a correction to the record in your Table 5 that shows that Solomar has donated over a mile, or recorded over a mile of access easements to the beach adjoining our private property. Almost a quarter of a mile of vertical access over private property to get to the beach. Public access is important to us, and protection of public resources and coastal resources is important to us. The third, the provision in the parking regulations with regards to private streets, however, eliminates the provision that private streets can be gated. And I did not notice that staff made any revision to that, nor is that prohibition on gates restricted to new private streets that may be developed after this ordinance change is adopted. That is Section 8176-8, subsection C. In order to provide essential ingress routes for emergency vehicles, or escape routes for residents during a wildfire or other public emergency, private gates are prohibited. My community is a gated community. We have facilitated public access, as I previously described. I don't understand how you can protect private property rights unless you somehow limit public access to private property. That goes with signage. There are signage requirements in law that require notice of private property to prevent prescriptive easements from being created. I'm not talking about a sign on the beach, I'm talking about a sign at the other three sides of a private property. How do you prevent a prescriptive easement from being created? We recognize that Planning Department and the Planning Commission are protective of private property rights, and believe me, we appreciate that. In closing, it is important that the LCP... In closing, it is important that the LCP revisions be approved without any last-minute changes made by the Coastal Commission. Ms. Welch identified three areas that the Coastal Commission staff has not bought off on. And those I watched last Friday at the Coastal Commission hearing in Santa Monica. I watched the county of Santa Barbara present two... Present two changes to their LCP. And Coastal Commission staff said, yes, we're in agreement with these changes. And the Santa Barbara County staff said, yes, we're in agreement with these changes. Last minute. Oh, but by the way, Coastal Commission staff says, we believe that you should not adopt these unless you add this additional condition. So, I don't know how you prevent that. I don't know how Planning Department can prevent last-minute changes that were not agreed to. I empathize with the difficulty that you and Planning and the board of supervisors are going to face on this. I appreciate that you've split it up into... Well, this piece isn't bite-sized. The previous one that was adopted last month, Coastal Commission ran right by, the medicinal marijuana shops. I mean, that was bite-sized. Everybody could agree on it. So, I wish you luck. I would request that the changes, as I have requested, be considered. I haven't heard how the gate issue is going to be handled, to my satisfaction. Thank you.
Okay, just a moment, sir. If you could stay for questions?
Yes.
The first one I have is your note. I can't read what that says.
What it says is, question mark, meaning. I didn't intend to ask you that question. It happened to be a copy that I had made a note on and inadvertently copied this morning.
Okay. Commissioner Anstine.
Back to your gated private road.
You?
Could you speak a little louder, please?
Your issue regarding gated private roads and the requirement to remove the gate, and your concern is prescriptive easements.
Yes.
Could you not record a permissive use and solve your problem? You could always withdraw it.
We have done that on our beachfront property. We've recorded public access easements on that. For a private... If the county of Ventura is willing to maintain and pay for upkeep on our private street, it might be something our board would consider. But absent that, I don't understand... It doesn't work, in my personal opinion.
I understand. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Roger Myers, followed by Richard McConney.
Good morning.
Please state your name and city.
I'm Roger Myers. I live at 3540 Pacific Coast Highway, which is Faria Beach, and I'm the president of the homeowners' society... Homeowners' Association. Although I'm not speaking for the association, because we haven't had the opportunity to have a board meeting to specifically discuss this. So, these are my personal comments. I think they will mirror what the other members of our association would say. I would like to suggest that another exemption from permitting be signs reminding the public to pick up trash and take it with them. We have a particular problem at Mondo's Cove, and we actually pay our landscapers to go down and clean up that area and clean up on the other side, on the railroad track side. We pay that and budget for that, because it just doesn't happen otherwise. We used to have signs that were posted there, and we got into a dispute with the Coastal Commission about 10 years ago, and they made us take them down. I think that that's something that might well be an exempt permit. In that regard, I'd like to see some enhancement of the purpose of the... Of our local ordinance to say it's a two-way street, that the members of the public who are using our beaches have some responsibilities to, which a lot of them don't seem to take into account. With respect to the tree protection provision, I just have a question. The way I read that, it could be construed to require permits for tree trimming. And I don't know whether that's what it's meant, but that's kind of the way I read it. And we have substantial trees in our public areas, our common areas, that we have to trim and maintain on a regular basis. And lastly, and this probably can't be incorporated into your present ordinance, but maybe it can be in an amendment down the road. And that would be if specifically singled out the film industry as a business which you're going to regulate, I guess, to encourage further use and make it a more friendly county for filming. But one of the areas that I'd like to see in our local coastal ordinance concerns surf schools. We have substantial surf schools that use our Mondo's Cove, and they've gotten to the point where I'm concerned about the safety of the kids in that the... On occasion, I see 10 or more kids with one instructor. I see no indication that they have any CPR training or safety training. And we've gotten into some surf wars out there, to the extent that the one surf school is doing graffiti on our seawalls. And I mean, it's a major thing out there. And I don't know if it can be included in the present ordinance or an amendment or a recommendation, but it's, to me, something that needs to be addressed. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I know that there's been a lot of work that's gone into the preparation of this. I wasn't able to go to the Coastal Commission meeting last week, but I appreciate the effort that the planning staff made to respond to the Coastal Commission's additional conditions concerning seawalls. And since it is St. Patrick's Day, a top of the morning to you.
Any questions to the speaker on this side? Commissioner Anstine.
Roger, I assume you've appealed to law enforcement on littering, et cetera, and gotten nowhere. Is that true?
Yeah. That's true.
Yeah.
And there's been some indication from the county council's office that the county might not have the ability to do that, but I disagree. I certainly would work... For those of you who don't know, I'm a lawyer. I've been practicing law for 47 years.
Yeah, he's older than...
Me, too.
He's older than we are.
And I have substantial municipal experience, and I would be glad to work with the county council and the planning department to try to come up with something on that.
Regarding the signage issue, are we preempted by Coastal Commission? I mean, I can understand and appreciate why he'd want that signage. I think it's a horrific traffic problem out there. I can't drive up and down and around there without worrying about hitting somebody.
Yeah.
I mean, it's amazing. It's terrible.
Caltrans has put those... I don't know what you call them, the dividers.
Yes.
Down the center now, which...
Now, they just hang in the middle, people do.
Yeah. At least you can hang in the middle now, and you don't make U-turns in the middle of that section there. By the way, just off the point here, and I know my time is up, we've been working with Supervisor Bennett's office to come up with a major improvement plan for the Cove there. And we're trying to get the Coastal Commission involved in Caltrans and the railroad and others, because there are a number of issues out there.
Well, it's a high traffic use. Can the county impose signage? Can... Is Coastal Commission preempted? Is that what the deal is? Obviously, Roger says that they were forced to remove signs in the past.
Right. The signs may have been in the Coastal Commission's area of original jurisdiction, which is between the... Basically, on the beach and going back to that rock revetment there.
No. What their concern was, on one side of the signs, we said, pick up your trash and take it with you on the beach side. On the other side, we said, right, we had the right to pass is permissible by us, because we own a portion of the Mondo's Cove.
And so, yeah, either the sign was in the area of original jurisdiction, or the Coastal Commission has taken a strong position about signs indicating private property rights that they believe will hinder public access to the beach. And so, even if the sign was within the county's jurisdiction, if we were going to allow those signs as part of our LCP, the Coastal Commission would ultimately have to sign off on those. And so, that would be a big issue with the Coastal Commission. And so, I guess as...
So, they're trying to... Not... They don't want to impede public access. That's their problem?
That's their main priority. Right, exactly.
Well, what about the highway traffic situation out there? Can we do anything about that? Because it's terrible.
Right. That's most likely within Caltrans purview, and what really needs to happen, and it sounds like it's starting to, is the county, Caltrans, and the Coastal Commission need to work out kind of a larger plan for the area because of the split jurisdiction involved.
Good luck, Roger.
Thank you.
Before you go away, I want to follow up on that surf school question. This might be one of the things that are not included in the grant, but I'm wondering if our next phase can include this surf school, which I'm glad that you reminded us.
Yes.
Because it completely escaped me, and I thought that I thought about everything. So, is it possible to include our surf schools in the next review, or is that before December... Before our grant runs out?
Should I go up to the mic or just go up to the microphone?
This is... I'm aware that there are a number of surf schools, and... Yeah, go ahead.
So, as you know, we're under a defined scope of work under this grant. I keep a running tab of all the requests that are, you know, deficiencies in our local coastal program. Surf schools is on that list. Once we get more funding, if the board decides to assist in that funding, then we'll go ahead and prioritize that Phase 3, I guess you could say, and address those more immediate issues.
Then what can property owners do in the meantime? Because this is an unregulated use, it sounds like, that has impacts on not just the private property, but on the public resource.
Now, we have crossed that bridge, and because Mondo's up into the rock revetment is technically Coastal Commission jurisdiction, we defer to the Coastal Commission to address surf schools. Coastal Commission came back and said, we need to really collaborate, because it's not just the beach and the water, but it's all the parking and the road. And so, again, as soon as we can be funded to address this issue, we will work with Coastal Commission staff to further, you know, create a program for this. I have looked at other local coastal programs, and it's interesting to see how they've designed surf schools. In one instance, they have limited a number of permits that they issue for that summer, and the priority are local surf schools that are bona fide, have CPR training, are, you know...
Sanitation?
Qualified, you know, surf instructors, and they are the first ones that get selected and get those first permits. Once those permits are issued, no more surf schools. They also show where those surf schools can be located. So, it would be a huge undertaking, because obviously, Mondo's is a great place to learn how to surf, but there could be other areas where surf schools are popping up as well.
I...
Can I just respond to one thing?
I invite you to respond.
Thank you. The reason... Now that the, for example, Santa Monica has a restricted number of surf schools that they will permit, they're now shipping them up to Mondo's. We see the buses and the kids coming up from there. So, it's impacting Mondo's Cove substantially, by virtue of these other jurisdictions having the ability to shut down the number that is allowed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard McConney, followed by Steve Harbison.
Hi, I'm Rick McConney, and I'm here to voice concerns about this legislation and tell you about my experience in dealing with the county planning on this issue. It's more like walking up to a door behind which a lot of things are going on that are going to affect you in your life, and you knock on the door and ask, can I get in? And someone at the door slides a little window and says, you got a question? And I say, yeah, I got a question. Well, let me answer your question. I says, well, I want to be part of the process. And the answer is, no, not right now. I don't think we're going to let you be part of the process. And then I wanted to mention that, you know, I had the good fortune of buying a very special piece of land in the Santa Monica Mountains. I was living in the neighborhoods of Oxnard and found a piece of property I could afford. But I found and increasingly find that the crushing effect of county regulations so discourage people from realizing their dreams in those mountains. And I know more and more people who give up on the process because they're crushed by it. And what you're considering today is a crushing project on the individual landowner of modest means that thinks they can pursue a dream in the Santa Monica Mountains. So, I'll go into my prepared statement. I live in the Santa Monica Mountains and have so for 28 years. I drive along our coast every day, and every day I delight with its magnificence, beauty, and power. I sacrifice a lot to be there. It is an hour's drive to the government center. Ventura County section of Pacific Coast Highway that runs along the Santa Monica Mountains has been described as the Big Sur of Southern California. When the California Legislature enacted the Coastal Act 40 years ago, it set up a plan to create a pathway to a brighter future for the California coast. In that plan, it called on the people of California to join with specialists from technical discipline to craft a plan. However, something seems to have gone wrong in the legislative plan. I can testify with complete confidence that of the hundreds of conversations with friends and neighbors, not one has spoken approvingly of coastal. In fact, we view the bureaucracy as oppressors, and in kind, I believe the bureaucracy view those who live in coastal as the enemy. Shouldn't we be on the same team? Can you really get to where you want to go without us? Who knows better the way to identify the precious coastal resources than those of us who live there? Do you think that any one of us want to witness its demise? Would you think that county planners would begin its process of updating its coastal plan by talking to people like me? I believe that they have decided that they really don't need me, because they and their technicians already know the way. I believe this, because during the 28 years that I have lived in coastal, I have received one postcard announcing a public outreach. Thank you, Jennifer. 28 years while living in the coastal zone, a place considered as fragile and vulnerable, a place where my behavior can dramatically affect everything. Planning claims it's not only important, but vital to the protection of the coastal zone. Silence. 28 years of silence. Yet, the legislation created the coastal zone demanded that they talk to me. And it's interesting that of all the references to the legislation, no mention is made of this reference in legislation. It did so when it wrote Section 30006, and I quote, "The legislature declares that the public has the right to fully participate in decisions affecting coastal planning, conservation, and development. That achievement of sound coastal conservation and development is dependent upon public understanding and support, and that continuing planning, which we're doing now, and implementation of programs for coastal conservation and development..." now, and implementation of programs for coastal conservation and development should include the widest possibility of public participation." From a very limited viewpoint, I believe this legislative finding has not been realized. My personal experience in dealing with planning, about two years ago, I met with planning officials at a public outreach, of which there were six people attending. At that meeting, I asked planning to come to our community to review the coastal update. Planning agreed and suggested that the meeting take place in about six months. I agreed to wait. Six months later, I contacted planning telling them that I wished to organize a meeting and that I would like to have, it would likely have 50 or more locals in attendance. Planning informed me that they had changed their mind and decided they would not meet with us. Later, I contacted the supervisor from my area and requested that their office intervene with planning to facilitate a meeting. That was six months ago. I am awaiting a response. I realize that interacting with the public is not easy, an easy activity for planners. It is much easier to interact with consultants, biologists, archaeologists, and other technocrats. Technocrats do not get emotional like affected citizens. They do not raise their voice and object to the burdens and aspects of an issue. But no one ever said that democracy was easy. As a result, top-down processes all too often the pathway selected. In general, citizens do not respond well to top-down government. We have drunk the Kool-Aid. We have bought into the ideal that it is a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. Our legislature understood that. The County of Ventura and the Coastal Commission staff seem not to understand that. During a telephone conversation with planning, I commented on a problem I had with the document we're looking at today. Planning's response was, "We have decided not to do that." My response, "Who is 'we'?" Recommendation, Planning Commission reject the planning division's coastal update on the grounds that it is out of compliance with legislative finding as stated in the Coastal Act of 1976, with instructions to fully comply with that section. That's it. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions to the speaker?
I'll state.
Did you submit a letter to the, to planning?
No, our conversations were mostly by email and telephone.
Okay. Thank you. Steve Harbison is our last speaker.
Good morning, and thank you for a brief opportunity to talk to you. I'm a resident at Seacliff Beach Colony. I don't speak on behalf of our Homeowners Association Board because they haven't had any opportunity or have not taken the opportunity to review all of these proposals. Nor did I, by the way. I didn't have notice of these proposed changes until a neighbor from another beach colony happened to send me a notice of this hearing. I tried immediately to go online and look at the proposed changes to the local coastal program, and they wouldn't download for me. I couldn't see them. And I was away for a week. I was back last evening. I finally was able to look at some of the sections. And I'm particularly concerned about the gate issue. Seacliff Beach Colony does not have any lateral beach access through the colony, through the private property owned by the Homeowners Association, or the private property owned by the individual owners. There is lateral access to the beach on either end of our colony, through Hobson Park and through an easement that exists through Caltrans property to the, what I call the north, which I guess is more like the west. So, there is no need for the public to have access to our private road at Seacliff Beach Colony. In fact, the emergency services all do have access to our private road. We regularly consult with the fire department and the police and the paramedics to make sure they, the current employees there have access to our gate codes and can get in. They always have been able to get in, and they always will be. So, I think the intent, if I read the staff's comment about private gates, is that Coastal Commission discourages private gated streets for the purpose of protecting public access to coastal recreational areas. That purpose doesn't exist with respect to Seacliff because there is no lateral access at all for the public. It is private property. We need to protect private property from other people. It would be just like at your own home. If you have a driveway and want to put a lock on your driveway access to your house, you're entitled to do that. Same should be true for Seacliff. My recommendation would be that some words be added to this proposed provision in Section 8176-8C. At the end of the sentence, it says, "Private gates are prohibited," that words be added where such gates would interfere with public access rights. In our event, in our situation, that would not occur. But something needs to be said that would allow our gate to continue to exist. I have not had any opportunity to research other law. I'm a recovering lawyer myself, recently retired. I don't know. There may be other laws, state laws, that would supersede this provision of your proposed local coastal plan. So, I don't know if staff would be amenable to what I suggested. Another suggestion would be to say that private gates are prohibited for new developments, allowing the private gates that presently exist at Seacliff and at Solomar and at Faria to continue to exist as they have been for many, many, many years. I don't know when they came in, what permits were granted then. I haven't had a chance to look back at all those things. But as far as I know, those are the only three gates to private roads in the coastal zone. So, I would hope you could take that into account now, or even at a later time before this goes to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you very much. Any questions to the speaker? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, oh, last speaker. You're going to have to just state your name and city of residence.
Hi, Francie Rewald, County of Ventura, unincorporated area. And good morning, everybody. And I just wanted to say that the area that we live in is impacted by Deer Creek Road and the traffic. And I appreciate the income that you desire to have from filming. But to increase it to that amount does impact us on a daily basis. It's a good thing we can go all the way back down from Deer Creek where it enters Cothran. There's usually not a sign until you get down to Deer Creek. So, then you have to turn around and go all the way back at times. And the signage might, would be more helpful. That's one thing I have to state. Also, in that area, there's at least 50, 75, perhaps more, people that live in that area. We were all before you for the tiger issue, and there's a good body of us there. I don't know who the contact person that this woman has to let us know about these things. Not one of us up there that I know has received a postcard. And we do have an informed body of emails that go out around the issues. You saw the impact that the tigers had on us. We all came before you as a, as a whole body of a neighborhood. None of us that I know have received anything about these things that impact us. And we'd like to be included. We should be. We're a large body there of people that live in that area. And I don't see that you've addressed in the tree trimming and tree information, the bark beetle infestation that I know you're all aware of that has occurred throughout our whole United States, and especially in the creek that is along Yerba Buena, full of very dead oak trees. That is fuel for a fire. Oak trees withstand fire, but these that are dead do not. I see no activity going on that anybody in the county is going down there to trim them out. They are dead. Bark beetle kills a tree. So, that means that we have to go through an onerous process to go and get these trees removed. And, you know, we as, everyone that I know up there is very cautious and concerned about the fire and the effects it has, and trees are fuel for that. And so, that impacts us by going through all these regulations. It's just, it's, as Rick said, it's crushing, that type of regulation. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Any questions?
Probably not.
Thank you. Okay. I would like to call back staff and have them respond to the concerns that were expressed by the residents and other speakers.
Thank you very much, and thank you, you know, members of the public for coming and participating and informing me of your concerns. Start off with Charles Caspary's concerns. As I mentioned before, we are under a limited scope of work per our grant agreement. We cannot do a cover-to-cover comprehensive update. The figures in our cap are antiquated. We know that. And so, they don't reflect your easements. And so, as funding becomes available, obviously, we'll tackle those issues. I have taken note. It's on my list of Phase Three items, and so, that will be reflected in future amendments. With regards to signage to prevent prescriptive easements, it's my understanding that to prevent a prescriptive easement to materialize, if you put signage to say you have the right to pass, it prevents that prescriptive easement from actually materializing. What I don't, what I'm not clear about is where that easement is located. If it's on private property, then obviously you could put a incidental sign or a non-commercial sign to acknowledge that this is my private property. I'm letting you pass. But by acknowledging that, then they couldn't record it as an easement because you've informed them of that. With regards to the prohibition of gates, Section 8176-8B states the following, "New private streets shall be approved only if such streets would better serve the occupants of a development and detrimental effects such as blocked road connections or restrictions on access to coastal resources are avoided." And what that says is, is that if that gate is going to prevent or preclude the public access from gaining access to the beach, which they would be entitled to based on legislative action, then no, we wouldn't allow gates on that street. However, if there is no connection to a recreational area, then we wouldn't prohibit that gate from being proposed.
You're saying that Seacliff--
For instance?
No, because they are already entitled with a gate, and we have no reason to revoke that gate permit.
Okay.
With regards to last-minute changes at the Coastal Commission level, we're anticipating that. I mean, that comes with the territory. If you look at historical LCP amendments that have gone through the Coastal Commission, there are hiccups. The first one is, the Coastal Commission has the authority to grant themselves a one-year time extension, meaning we may not get to hearing on our amendments for a year after they receive it. However, they pride themselves on getting you to hearing within six months. I've also been told by my coastal staff that because we've worked so closely with them, that time could be even minimized even more. We don't know what they're going to say. We won't know until the staff report comes out. But what I've done is I've been completely transparent, and I've identified where there may be some potential conflict. But I've also enforced that we have connected to the Coastal Act, and we uphold those Coastal Act policies through the regulations that we're proposing. With regards to Roger Meyer's questions, it would be great to have a freestanding sign that says, "Pick up your trash." Freestanding signs, they require a PD, and so, we're not prohibiting him from getting a sign. If that sign is located in the Coastal Commission's jurisdiction, then he would have to get a permit from them. With regard to tree trimming, this is kind of an interesting animal. When we were working with Coastal Commission staff, they wanted us to do a discretionary permit for tree trimming of native trees. And we said, "They'll never come in for a PD permit to trim a tree. They just won't." And so, we convinced them that we have a permit already in place that is a zoning clearance, a ministerial permit over the counter. It only applies to native trees. Now, whether or not they come in is another story. But at least, we've provided a mechanism that is more simplified than a full-blown-out PD that says zoning clearance with an inspection. And that inspection is just to make sure that they stayed within the confines of what they were pruning or altering. Because if you really prune too much, you compromise the health of the tree. I think we've talked about the surf schools. It's on my list of Phase Three. I know that it's a problem. I've been informed about it, and so, it's on my radar. With regards to Rick McConney's comments, Rick came to my March and my November public outreach. He was fully aware that all of my documents were on the website. I know that he has concerns regarding our ESHA chapter. And I know he has concerns that we're not opening it up as a sense of like a charot before we tackle these ordinance amendments. We really don't have the time nor the funding to open this up into kind of a creative brainstorming before we initiate these amendments. When it comes to ESHA, the Santa Monica Mountains are covered by three jurisdictions, Ventura, Malibu, and LA County. Malibu and LA County have already established ESHA policies and regulations that are certified by the Coastal Commission. They pretty much set the bar as to where our LCP has to go. And so, what we're preparing currently is that ESHA chapter. We're trying to find consistency with what the Coastal Commission has already certified. And then, we're going to present this to the public to comment on. We feel that it's important to have a body of work to comment on, based on our time and money constraints as the more productive way of vetting this process out. Regulations are restrictive. We're in the coastal zone. It's a fragile area. We're fortunate to have 43 miles of it. And yeah, they're very strict because the resources are fragile, and they're limited. With regards to communication with Rick, he did contact the Board of Supervisors. And the board aide forwarded me his email, and I responded to that email. I don't know if Rick was on the CC list, but if he was, he would have gotten that response. And it's just a matter of pulling that email out of that archive. But I did respond to his concerns. I'm not sure what he's mentioning about the telephone conversation, but I've always had an open-door policy with Rick. He knows where to find me. He knows that I will give him the time of day and as much time as he needs to discuss his concerns. And lastly, the meeting request that he had, he really wanted to talk about ESHA, and he really wanted to get that public input. But at that time, we had just lost our staff biologist, and we were trying to fill that position in. So, the ESHA chapter was actually put on the shelf until my new biologist can come in and work with me on that ESHA chapter. We do have a staff biologist. We're back into construction of that chapter. Once we have a good draft, we're going to open it up to public outreach, and we're going to solicit comments on that topic. With regards to Steve Haverson's comments, the gentleman from Seacliff, I know we've had some issues with downloading the documents. In fact, Charles Caspary contacted me on Sunday morning, saying, "Hey, I can't, you gave me this link to the PC-- gave me this link to the PC. I can't get it." Well, it was there Friday. And apparently, we had some firewall issues with ITE. So I immediately contacted Anna and had her chase down where the error was. And then, Sunday morning, I ran into my office and started shooting him PDS, just so he would have that staff report because he couldn't get it. So I'm trying a valiant effort to get the word out that the PC staff report's out there and the documents are available for review. And then, he also had mentioned about his gate, and we're not going to revoke the Seaclet gate. It's entitled. There's no reason to revoke it. And so that, that really doesn't become a primary issue. But one question that he did mention was 8176-8. And that section says, "In order to provide essential ingress routes for emergency vehicles or escape routes for residents during a wildfire or other public emergency, private gates are prohibited." We'd like to make a correction to that section and acknowledge that if private gates are permitted, that they comply with the Fire Department standards for Knox Box.
Good.
So we'd like to make that change in the record. And then with Francie Farrell's comments, again, if she would like to propose signage along Deer Creek Road, there is a process that's going to be put in place in our LCP. It sounds like it would be a freestanding sign, meaning it would require a PD. Filming on Deer Creek Road, it is a popular location for car commercials. One of the things that we did in terms of neighborhood consent is that in the rural areas, that radius is 1,000 feet. So we can try to capture more of the residents and inform them of what's occurring on Deer Creek Road or even Yerba Buena Road. With regards to tree trimming and the bark beetle, I've actually talked to an applicant about trees that are dying on his property, and he's really afraid that they're going to fall on his house. And with the drought, we're seeing trees fall in the middle of streets. It's happening. We get it. What I mentioned to you before with regards to the tree protection, if you have substantive evidence that that tree is dead, we are not requiring you to come in for a permit. It's exempt. But to safeguard you from potential challenges as to what happened to that tree, provide us pictures, provide us evidence that that tree is dead, we'll put it on file and we'll let you remove it. There's no permit fee. Just provide us the evidence that it's truly in a state where it's going to die and it's in a precarious situation. So I think that answers all the questions.
Are there any further questions of staff at this time?
Seeing none, I have one. For members of the public who are not satisfied with responses, is this, is this process finished with this hearing?
No.
How should they, how should they best register their concerns and suggestions in, in a way that's meaningful?
I am ball and chain to my desk. I'm always there. And they have my contact information. And honestly, it's always nice to have one point person as the clearinghouse. And seeing that I'm the manager of this project, obviously, I'd be a good point source to address these concerns. Now, with regards to the discretionary hearing process, we first start with the Planning Commission. And we presented our case to you. You're recommending approval, hopefully, to move on to the Board of Supervisors. We've tentatively scheduled the board hearing for May 10th. That's quite a bit of time to digest this material and provide comments. They can provide written comments to me. They can provide verbal comments at the hearing. So there's ample time before the board hearing to provide that. And it'll give us an opportunity to clean up the wordsmithing, the grammatical areas, and make the document that much more polished. Then, we also have the Coastal Commission hearing. And as I mentioned before, chances are, they're going to authorize that time extension, and that'll give us a minimum of an additional three months. And that gives them opportunity to provide comment for that hearing as well.
Okay, thank you. I think it's, it's really important that if you have a point of view, that you get it in writing to these decision-makers so that you are part of the process. Get it in writing. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Rendrikis.
I had some questions of staff as it relates to today's presentation related to parking and related to the movie situation. In response in Exhibit 10, I believe it was, with responses to the various participants that sent you documentation or input, I noted a letter from a resident in the Silver Strand area with signatures attached for about three dozen other residences. And can you briefly...
Absolutely.
...go into the text of that, and then I'd like to respond to that?
Absolutely. It was from a gentleman named Brian Hore, I believe. And he came to our public outreach out in Port Weneme. And he had some strong concerns. And they were based on cumulative impacts with multiple permits going off at once. But he was also concerned with previous historical issues that had occurred. Namely, there was an instance in Silver Strand where pornographic film was taking place illegally in a home. And it became more of a party where participants would just go to the house and be a part of what was going on there. And he has small children, and he just doesn't want to see that in his neighborhood. Well, you might recall a couple of years ago, when LA did an urgency ordinance to address pornographic filming and making sure that it involves protection. And Ventura County soon after adopted their emergency ordinance to address pornography. And so when a film permit is being requested and they are going to do pornographic film, they also have to touch base with environmental health and get a health permit. And that health permit has to be posted on the site.
How do we handle, I guess, we're talking about a perfect world, but the reality is, we live in an imperfect world. And whether this particular instance that this resident was talking about historically was permitted or not, it almost sounds like it wasn't permitted, which is the world, the world we live in. How are we going to ensure that, that there's some compliance? I see somebody from the Film Ministry, obviously, we've had a speaker here, but, but what is the process? And the resident, obviously, was concerned about curtailing and the impact of improper filming in the residential area and how it's curtailed as quickly as possible. So how do you...
Well, first and foremost, we do not have the authority to regulate the content of film.
I understand.
That's first and foremost. So what we did was, we added neighborhood consent, i.e. waiver forms, specific to that neighborhood. So 300-foot radius, they will be informed of filming. And if 51% say, "We don't want that filming production in our neighborhood," then the film production crew has to find a new location. So we tried to address his concerns by giving him some authority to prevent cumulative impacts on filming, as well as filming that could really be a negative to his quality of life, whether it's, you know, a lot of gunfight or, you know, a lot of commotion, depending on what their activities entail. And so we provided that neighborhood consent so that they have some control of what happens in their neighborhoods. And that was the best thing that we could step up to the plate with while still acknowledging that we wanted to have filming be in that area. Because there are residents who see the benefit of having filming in their neighborhoods. So it's kind of a catch-22. You want to please them both. And the way we found some sort of, you know, agreement was with, with this neighborhood consent.
Well, the, the resident raises pretty valid points. And I guess at this point, point of disclosure, I'm a Silver Strand resident. And so I, I understand what he's saying as it relates to activities and problems with parking. Your report indicates, excuse me, that parking is at a premium there for a variety of reasons. Any events, planned or unplanned, are going to have a significant impact on parking. Beach access is difficult, even though the report indicates that, and I'm talking about events now, the report indicates parking on either side of Silver Strand Beach. Parking also occurs along wherever they can find it, including Island View. So it's difficult. I, I would, I understand what we're, what we're doing with temporary, excuse me, with PDPs on long-term filming. But it seems to me, and, and the requirement of having off-site command post, if you will, and shuttling the people in. I'm not, and I realize we're talking about temporary permits and ministerial responsibility or, or permission, whether we can incorporate similar off-site, off-prem locations of the logistical part of the, of the filming, if it in fact is going to occur as part of that consent. And I appreciate the fact there's a consent letter requirement. Personally, I'd prefer it didn't occur, but I understand, I understand the rock and the hard spot the county's in here in trying to get compliance with Coastal Commission and other, other regulations. On the issue of parking, it's mentioned in your report, talked about cooperation with the city of Oxnard and Port Weneme and the naval base Ventura County. And naval base Ventura County is concerned about security because of the parking along Panama on Island View. Again, I'm very familiar with it. There is a fence that borders that western perimeter, for lack of description, other One of the things that, that occurred on the beaches, Silver Strand and Hollywood Beach, about two years ago, I'm thinking now, as we, we were working with Transportation on the issue of easements and including parking. And that's where the diagonal parking came from on Roosevelt as a result of, of those committee outreach meetings. One of the things that's, that's come to my attention since that time, or as a result of that, is, is the public right-of-way beyond the pavement. Center point, I think it's 40 feet wide from, from curb to curb. And as relates to, as it relates to Island View, that's not the case. As Island View borders against the naval base and that fence, it's, and the naval base has been there since, obviously, World War II. I don't know what point that perimeter fencing was put in. I doubt whether it was back all that, that long ago. However, I doubt that there was any sort of encroachment permit applied for or received by naval, naval authorities to put the fence where it's at, because I think it encroaches significantly on that, that addition, that right-of-way buffer the county requires on all its roads. And I also read your report that the county, that the Navy feels that there might be the possibility to move the fence, but it's based on funding availability, which is always the case. I think that issue ought to be taken up with Transportation and see what, where that fence is specifically in relation to the requirements that the county has for county roads. And see what we can do about trying to get some sort of compromise or compliance. And it obviously would probably require more harsh force power than this commission has or you have, and probably at least the board moving forward on it. Because it would go a long way toward relieving some of the issues as it relates to parking, but also some of the issues as it relates to security on the part of the naval authorities there at Port Weneme.
If I can answer those concerns.
Yes, please.
With regards to filming, regardless of what time of year it is, summer peak season or not, we have to make sure that there's adequate coastal access parking. And if there isn't, because those roads are narrow and they're not improved with sidewalk, curb, and gutter, then they would have to find ways to make sure that that coastal access parking is available. And there are closer, underutilized parking areas near Silver Strand and Hollywood, namely, Channel Islands Harbor and Mandalay Bay. And so these production companies could discuss with those entities a temporary parking base camp and shuttle their necessary equipment and actors to the appropriate film location. Because it's really important that we uphold the Coastal Act goals and make sure that we don't impede public access and we provide adequate coastal access parking. With regards to the JLUZ, the Joint Land Use Study that you mentioned, and the right-of-way and the fence. When Hollywood Beach and Silver Strand maps were created, the roads were based on the standards at that time. Those maps were created in the early 20s. So they're substandard to what today's road standards are. And so I don't know what the right-of-way is on Island View or Sawteal, but from what the naval base has informed us is, is that fence is actually, they could move that fence and, and take up that, that parking because that area is Navy property. So clearly, we'd have to verify through a survey where that property line is. And if the Navy base wants to pursue relocating that fence and it's on their property, they could. Now, that would end up eliminating a lot of parking. And so we're hopeful that we can provide an equitable resolution to this issue, whether it be redesigning parking on that street or some other amenable solution. But what's interesting is, is when I dealt with Coastal Commission staff on parking, their concerns were that they don't want to see no parking signs. They don't want to see red curb signs on areas that are available for free public parking. And so we didn't incorporate the language that they wanted us to because we were concerned that the Navy base would throw signs on their property that would prohibit parking. And so we continued to work with the naval base, and we're going to try to get resolution on this. We understand their concerns with regards to security, and we'll definitely bring Transportation in on the conversations.
Thank you. I appreciate the fact that the head of Transportation has some history with the Navy, so he, obviously, he would know the protocols and hoops he'd have to go through to...
Yeah.
...get it done. That's all. Thank you.
Any further questions to staff? I'll close the public hearing and entertain deliberations.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Westner.
I'd like to offer up a motion that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors, the recommended staff actions on Pages 28 and 29 with the following additions, that the errata presented by staff today be included, specifically about the Ventura County Fire Department, and the additional language to be added as far as the Knox Box, as far as the 8176.8 subsection C. That is my motion.
And the kind of, well, the other, the other one was the correction that I had on my power.
Yeah, that's what I said.
That's what he just said.
All the errata that you presented. Right.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Does that include taking in this revised Exhibit B and then the original Exhibit B? I, I hope that we can straighten that out.
revised Exhibit B.
Okay. All right. So, please vote.
Vote, it's not coming up.
Did you vote?
No. I haven't. It's not coming up.
I saw five zip up there.
No, did you?
Yeah.
You know, it just wouldn't be fitting, considering the occasion, that this works smoothly.
Of course. There we go. And a screen, too.
Thank you very much for coming down. Next on the agenda, if we could skip over to discussion and report by the Planning Director on board items, board actions, and other matters.
So let's see. Let me just go over your calendar real quick for the Planning Commission hearing on...
hearing on April 7th. So on April 7th, you have two items. You have a consideration of a modified CUP for Marotta Petroleum Company. And then you also have an update on the general plan. So we will be bringing some of our consultants in and our general plan team and talk to you a little bit about where we're heading and the roles and responsibilities and the schedule for the Planning Commission. So that won't be, that particular item won't be too long, probably 30 or 45 minutes, just to kind of set the overview for that. And so that's all I have for you. You have something for me?
Are there any items the Planning Commission wishes to introduce at this time?
Can I present the list?
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Onst.
I have something to say. I've had the good fortune to practice law for over 40 years. I've been a city attorney for three cities and advised planning commissions, and I've never met the like of Mr. Westner. He is by far the best I've ever been in contact with. I think everybody here has learned from Mike. I know I have. I wish I could maybe adopt some of his demeanor, which, as Mike told me, linebackers don't change, I guess. But he certainly is the best of the best, and I'm really going to miss him.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
I also want to commend Mike for all the help he's given me. I learned just by listening. I'm not an attorney, but it certainly helps me to have two attorneys on this panel. I also appreciate the way Mike can keep the issues clear, particularly as it relates to issues before, as it may get a little emotional, and stay with, stay with the focus on the topic and sometimes having to bring us back in. But it's greatly appreciated. Mike and I have some history before this, way back, as I found out once I got here. I knew, I met Mike, I knew Mike when I was with the city of Moore Park as a chief and he was with the Planning Commission there, about that same time, although I don't think we ever actually met there. But then he reminds me when I sat on this panel that we both are not retired, inactive Marines, I guess. So anyway, we're kind of dealing with crisis and emotions all the time. Anyway, I thought, I thought, I would say that. Mike, I wish you the best. I hope you don't be, stay a stranger. I know you're still going to continue to practice some law here, so maybe stop on by and see us when it's appropriate. Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly.
I just wanted to thank Commissioner Westner for his guidance and support and encouragement during my first year on the commission. I really appreciate him and I will miss him.
Who am I going to crack jokes with now? Mr. Soberseid's here. That is what I appreciate, as well as your intelligence, as your wit, and your patience. And that is a quality that you have that appears to be immeasurable. I so appreciate it, and you will be missed. So do you have any words to say, Commissioner Westner?
Like you said, the wit of souls brevity, so I'll try to be brief, which is going to be very difficult, each and every one of you in this room, particularly the new appointee. So I welcome you to this. I will say a lot of prayers for you, but I will say this, one of the people just standing up, the staff here is tremendous. They always have been, I believe they always will be. And I'm going to miss all of you. I mean, it's like watching my family grow, to be honest with you. I mean, you were 18 when you started, right, Ken? And it's, as I've said when I submitted my resignation letter, some of it's been magic, some of it's been tragic, but it's been a great ride all the way. I got to be real honest with you. It's been wonderful, like I was mentioning, Rick, in the last 48 hours, three chiefs of police at Moore Park, himself, Jeff, our current sheriff, and a past chief of police, Marty Ralphs, interacting. And then I find out these two are also former Marines. And then to have these incredible women come on this board and bring certain perspectives that, I'm sorry, archaic throwbacks. Bring, I mean, I've always valued that when I came to this table, that with the positions you bring with your intelligence. Yes, I will be back, like Commissioner Bartel's back there. He just keeps turning up on me wherever I go. Yep, yep. So I will be back and like Councilman Brennan from Ventura came back one day because I always complained, nobody would talk during public comments section. So with that, I don't want, I want to be as brief as possible, but I think love might be too strong of a word because in the English language, there's only one word. But I'm going to miss all of you tremendously, particularly the glare from the podium, Mr.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I have the honor of doing a planning tradition, which is, of course, the resolution of appreciation for Commissioner Westner. I also have some other remarks here, which are statements not made by Commissioner Westner. So we'll get to those in a bit. And this plaque and resolution is for Michael Westner for his service in the Ventura County Planning Commission, March 9th, 1995, to March 17th, 2016. And this is the combined between his father and himself. Whereas Michael Westner was nominated by Judy Michaels of the 4th District and was appointed by the Board of Supervisors on March 9th, 1995, to serve on the Planning Commission, whereas Michael Westner served as Chair of the Planning Commission in 1997, 2002, 2008, 2013, 2015, and Vice Chair in 1996, 2001, 2006, 2007, and 2012. Whereas Michael Westner's tenure as Chair was notable for both his patience and general approach in dealing with speakers, which greatly facilitated public participation in difficult land use matters. Whereas significant land use issues were heard by the Planning Commission during Michael Westner's service that benefited from his careful consideration and insightful commentary. Whereas Michael Westner contributed to major revisions in the County General Plan, Thousand Oaks Area Plan, revisions of the Ojai and El Rio, adoption of the Saticoy Area Plan, adoption of the new cell site ordinance, provisions in the farm worker ordinance, and amendments of the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinances. Whereas Michael Westner considered numerous discretionary projects, such as the Weldon Landfill, Baylord Landfill, Tolden Landfill, Grimes Rock, Semex, Best Rock, Wayne J. San, the development of the Oak Park Community, Sheriff's Ojai Honor Farm, Oxnard Union High School, the Tom Barber Golf Center, General Electric Satellite Station, and the Ronald Reagan Library Edition. Whereas Michael Westner served the citizens of Ventura County while representing the 4th Supervisory District and the communities of Simi Valley, Moore Park, Santa Susana Knolls, Box Canyon, Chatsworth Peak, Homakers, Tierra Rahada Valley, and the entire county in an exemplary manner. Whereas Michael Westner endeavored in his own fashion to make the best decisions and advance the quality of land use planning for the benefit of all the people of Ventura County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Commission of Ventura County hereby honors Michael Westner for 21 years of dedicated public service and sincerely thanks him for hard work, leadership, patience, good humor, and thoughtful decision-making. Passed and adopted this 17th day of March, 2016. Thank you, Commissioner Westner. And. Now, it's traditional, it's traditional that you come down here to get your, to get This was be the first and last time I got to instruct a planning commissioner to do anything.
Don't make it heavy.
There you go, sir. Now, you can stay here because I thought of some things that Commissioner Westner wanted to say, but never quite around, got around to saying it. And things like, "I've got this right, no need for further discussion." "I want to believe you." Or shortened to, "I am the law." Then a few other classics like, "Madam Chair, I read the 45-page letter to the extent possible in three minutes. Please set your cellphone to self-destruct. Please park in the three-hour lot. The county budget depends on it. Appeal this." "Your three minutes are up." And finally, apparently, Mr. Baca has nothing to say. Anyway, thank you, Mike.
So Commissioner Westner, we also got you this beautiful little plaque here that says to Michael Westner, "An appreciation and recognition of your 21 years of dedicated service as a Ventura County Planning Commissioner from 1995 till 2006." So we'll be giving this to you to pack up with all the other things that you have. And then I also wanted to invite anybody that wanted to come down and speak and say a few words before we go out in the reception areas. We have a reception out there with some cake and some food and some things to eat. So we'll be moving there. If anybody has anything to say or... I see two ex-planning commissioners, three, three in the room. Come on, Bill.
Madam Chair, Brian Brennan for the record, former planning commissioner, got the opportunity to serve with Michael and on this board a number of years ago, courtesy of Supervisor Susan Lacy. I did not know much about planning, but I was sort of a citizen planner and had some of that background. But as you all know, there's quasi-judicial matters have a lot different meaning. And working with Michael and his ability to be able to allow for public comment, allow for board members to get out there, but then able to steer us to a final, I guess, motion into the things that would stand up in court, he was absolutely stellar at. So I know your board will have some big shoes to fill. I know you'll be able to, somebody will step up and do the same thing. But I just want to say, Michael, you're been indispensable and as solid as a rock, especially when I served with you and even more so out in the community and looking back at planning commission hearings now, your ability to be able to help the board get to those, reach those decisions has been very important. So thank you so much.
There is a tradition that clearly has passed, and I almost put it on today, but missing our Hawaiian shirts. And your wife's beautiful work for all of those years. And the other thing is that in that moment of conflict, in that moment of hearing where it's time to set the bar, but still have a civil hearing, you are the best of the best. And Ametson comes to mind, and Laura said to remind of also Weldon, to be able to say, "It is a time to discuss and to deliberate, not to throw things." And you bring that, I always laugh when we disagree. We ended up making the motion in the second, and I appreciate that.
I got, I was fortunate enough to make some comments at the board meeting on Tuesday as well, and I shared with them that when I got onto the Planning Commission, Mike was certainly a mentor of mine, as was Bill, and I'm just about recovered, I might add. It was always a pleasure to serve with Mike. And then when I kind of got flipped around and got on the other side of the dais was interesting. He didn't give me too hard of a time, which I do appreciate. But I really would just echo Bill's comments. Mike was always steady, a rock, always a very respectful of staff and the public, did a terrific job, and certainly fortunate to serve up there with him as well as serve as staff for him. So wish you a lot of luck in the future, Mike. We're going to miss you.
Thank you. Words mean a lot. I'm sure everybody wants to get to the cake, and I appreciate that because it is lunchtime. So I saw my rock and roller come in. That makes me feel really good. Thanks, Robert. Appreciate it. Just a final term, I got up at 3:30 this morning. I did not realize how much this was going to impact me, to perfectly be honest with you. I had no idea. Only one other time is this type of emotion hit me. And that's when I said goodbye to my Marines. Normally, when you leave active duty, particularly as an officer, you go to an officer's function. The sergeant major came forward and asked the commanding general if they could hold it in the missile. That, it meant a lot, as does this. That's the level this is for me. Okay? So I would like to leave with just these words this morning. A man once said, that I respect, that the world will little note nor long remember what we say here, but they will never forget what is done here. And I've always tried to keep that focus. So as the words are said or not said, but when it comes down to what do we do, that has the lasting effect. So with that, I'd like to say hasta la vista, sayonara, adieu. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'll adjourn this meeting in Michael Westner's honor. Good job, well done.